Good morning and welcome to the September tenth, two thousand and twenty four edition of Elgin County Council. It is nine AM and I will call this meeting to order. First order of business is the adoption of the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four be adopted.
Those minutes were previously circulated and I hope everyone's had opportunity to peruse them. If there are no errors or omissions, I would entertain a mover and seconder. Counselor Widener will move. Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. I'll remind members of disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Seeing none, we will move on with the committee of the whole.
Resolved that we do now move into committee of the whole.
We have a mover and seconder for that. Deputy Warden Jones and Counselor Jiguer. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Section six, reports of council outside boards and staff. Six one is the Warden's activity report for August. The report is attached to the agenda package. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any. I would note there are a couple of date changes to be made here. The renaming exercise at the West Lorne Arena was on the twenty fourth, not the twenty second. And Watermelon Fest was on the twenty fourth as well. And I hope the event at West Lorne went very well. Perfect. If there are no questions, then Catherine?
Resolved that the report titled Warden's Activity Report, August two thousand and twenty four from Warden Ketchaba dated August thirty first, two thousand and twenty four be received and filed.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Hens and Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? That is carried. Six two, from the Director of Community and Cultural Services, the Elgin County Library Guidelines Branch Performance Analysis. It's a mouthful, Brian. Good morning.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to county council. I'm pleased today to be joined by Natalie Marlowe, our manager of library services. This report provides benchmarking data for the library's ten branches relative to Guidelines for Rural Urban Public Library Systems, the fourth edition, which council received as a planning document earlier this year. So I know there's a lot of information in this and I certainly won't go through all of it, but I would like to spend a few minutes to highlight some aspects of the results. First off, this is the first time we've been able to bring council really good information about the populations being served by each branch, the so-called catchment areas, and we have defined those areas for you in the report. I need to highlight the excellent work of Tyson Edwards in creating the branch profiles attached to this report in the power of GIS to give us really good data, including more accurate population counts, because this information is the basis on which we then establish branch categories of small, medium, and large, and then on which the guidelines are applied. For the purposes of applying the guidelines, we have one branch in the large category, Elmer, three branches in the medium category, Straffordville, Port Stanley, and Dutton, with the five remaining branches in the small category. Overall, our branches are performing relatively well, meaning forty-six of the sixty guidelines presented at a minimal level at least. And I was part of the benchmarking process with our fellow Aruplo members and have provided a high-level summary of those results in the report as well, which I will be presenting in greater detail at our group meeting next week. As far as specific guidelines, it is fair to say that this council in our library team are doing an effective job in making resources and investments available in the guidelines directly in your control from an operating perspective, including size of the physical collection, hours of operation, which are always being reviewed, technology and staffing. When it does come to staffing, we are operating on the lower end of the recommended guideline and levels have actually declined slightly relative to population growth and service levels since the last time this information was presented to council back in two thousand and eighteen. So these levels will need to be assessed as we go forward, as we did experience some operational challenges over the summer that were mitigated by our on-call system and the efforts of our supervisors. So this is just all to say that we're within the minimum guideline, but certainly an area we need to consider growing as we move forward. I might like to turn my attention to the one guideline where the library is not performing well, and this is in terms of facility size, which you can see is a challenge for most Aruplo members, and is the one guideline not directly in the county's control. The physical condition of our branches is solid, and the revised leasing framework we put in place with our LMPs that took effect in two thousand and twenty-three is working well. And we do have relatively recent renovations and expansions to celebrate, including most recently at our South Old Township Library Shedden Branch. But I need to draw council's attention, in particular to the serious challenges we are facing from an operational perspective at our Elmer branch, which is operating in three thousand eighty-one square feet of space while serving a catchment area of nearly sixteen thousand people and with a strong base of active cardholders within that number. The issue of an expanded Elmer library, I think it's fair to say, has been hotly contested over several years. And often that issue has been focused on the town of Elmer and Elmer Town Council as owners of the building. However, I think it's important to remember that this is a partnership between the county and the town, and from an operational perspective, we have to advocate for our needs, provide the level of service residents in the catchment area should expect, and that our staff need to properly deliver the service. Counselor Cookett, our CEO, and I recently met to discuss ways we can move forward on this issue, and I would like to acknowledge Counselor Cookett's longstanding support of the library. And we feel there is a path forward that could see the library work more actively with the town and town council to break what I would call a logjam on this issue that could see us take a more active role in articulating space needs, a vision of how we can work together to best meet those needs, and even a fundraising strategy that is a mutual effort, but with a library more directly involved. Myself and our team in the library would be willing to engage in future discussions with the town and come back to you on a potential path forward that again will hopefully break the logjam on the issue. So hopefully more to follow on that. And with those comments, Natalie and I will be happy to answer any questions council might have.
Thank you for that report, Brian. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Cookett?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you too, Brian. Thank you very much for that exhausting report, you and your team. Certainly, when we look at at the space in Elmer being twenty-one percent of what is needed according to the Aruplo guidelines, it certainly begs something to be done. And I was pleased to hear that when we're talking about partnership, when we're talking about changing kinds of relationships between the county and Elmer in terms of that kind of thing in the future. So I look forward to discussions. One comment I would have, the Aruplo guidelines are kind of fantastic in terms of the amount of space is needed, and they do a good job in talking about, you know, the reasons for the space. One of the things I wish that Aruplo did was advocate the use of the library beyond being a bookplace. And they really don't do a very good job at that. And they really need to do more of a job of that, because most of the criticism comes from people who say, well, we don't need books anymore in terms of, you know, physical books in the library. We can all do it online, but they're missing the whole point of what a library is. So anyway, just a comment and thank you for that report.
Thank you for those remarks. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none? Catherine?
Resolved that the report titled Elgin County Library Guidelines Branch Performance from the Director of Community and Cultural Services dated September tenth, two thousand and twenty four be received and filed.
We have a mover, Counselor Cookett, and seconder. Counselor Hens. All in favor? That's carried. Six three, Director of Community and Cultural Services, the Rodney Library Relocation Support. Brian, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to council. This report follows up on council's direction to provide further guidance on West Elgin's request to endorse the future relocation of the Rodney Library to the former town hall in the village. The county does have a library branch construction policy which offers a good roadmap on how council may wish to respond to this request. We are recommending that council respond, supporting West Elgin's general process to examine the future location of the library, which could encompass the former town hall, and our willingness to work with the municipality to develop a letter of intent based on the policy and once a more definitive plan is developed. So the first step in getting county council's endorsement on a specific location lies with West Elgin. As staff, we will continue to monitor the situation and the opportunity for an expansion to the branch and work with West Elgin's staff as needed. So we are recommending we inform West Elgin of our policy, provide general support to their process, and see what next steps the municipality proposes taking for a future, leading to a future letter of intent with more detail regarding the square footages and construction-ready aspects of this project.
Okay, thank you for that report, Brian. Does anyone have any questions, concerns? Counselor Latham?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Brian. I thank you for that. I know the old town hall, you know, the renovations haven't been started because, you know, now they know that the library may be interested, then their inside plans and that, you know, can be finalized. So obviously they'll be back to you as and when, if ever that happens. I have to use those words because I'm not quite sure whether it ever will happen or not, because it's a very costly thing and grants have to come into, you know, into play here. So I thank you for that, and that will certainly live in the committee that is, you know, going to plan this, and we'll see how it goes from there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Anyone else? Okay, Catherine, please.
Resolved that Elgin County Council affirms its support of the municipality of West Elgin's process to determine a suitable future location for the Rodney Library, subject to the terms and conditions of the County of Elgin's library branch construction policy, and that the warden issue a letter on behalf of Elgin County Council to the municipality of West Elgin in support of the municipality's process to determine the future location of the Rodney Library, along with a copy of the county's library branch construction policy.
Okay, do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Latham will move. Deputy Warden Jones will second. All in favor? That's carried. Six four, Director of Community and Cultural Services, the West Lorne Library Expansion Opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to council. This report dovetails nicely with the two previous reports just presented, as it is seeking council's response to a potential expansion opportunity to our West Lorne branch. And I will say about all three reports, you know, for us to have a discussion about the future of libraries and how we may potentially expand them is a really healthy and positive discussion for us. Wes Elgin has approached the library about interest in expanding into space now vacated at the West Lorne Community Complex, which council initially considered back in July. An expansion to the West Lorne branch can be justified according to our guidelines just presented to account and to account for future growth and to alleviate some challenges we are experiencing at that location in terms of programming space and the lack of a meeting, quiet study area, among other things. Wes Elgin has come to us with two options, and that is the entire first floor of the complex or the adjacent space recently vacated. And we are recommending that council work with Wes Elgin to facilitate an expansion into that former office space only at the present time, which represents just under a thousand square feet. Once again, we recommend that we follow the county's library branch construction policy to move this expansion forward, which means we work with Wes Elgin to formulate a letter of intent for county council's formal endorsement, which could take effect as soon as two thousand and twenty-five. I've outlined the lease and financial considerations that will need to go along with this opportunity. And I would like to highlight the opportunity Wes Elgin has to take advantage of our interest-free loan from the county, so up to a hundred thousand dollars repayable over ten years. As staff, we are excited about the possibility of this expansion, which can be justified according to our guidelines and community usage. And we are recommending that county council affirm its support in principle and give us the opportunity to work with Wes Elgin staff and council to facilitate the expansion.
Thank you, Brian, for that report. Kind of truncates off, and I'm not sure that you're done, but okay. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? As per the report, the possibility of expanding a thousand square feet. Just to confirm. Okay? Catherine, please.
Resolved that Elgin County Council affirms support in principle for an expansion to the West Lorne Library in the West Lorne Community Complex of up to one thousand square feet and in the space adjacent to the library's current location, subject to the terms and conditions of the County of Elgin's library branch construction policy, and that staff be directed to work with the municipality of West Elgin to supply further information to county council as part of a letter of intent from the municipality of West Elgin, as outlined in the county's library branch construction policy, for formal adoption at a later date.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Latham and Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? Is there any opposed? Then that is carried. Moving on with section six five, from the Manager of Economic Development, Tourism, Strategic Initiatives, Community Safety and Well-Being, Substance Use, and the Planet Youth Model. Good morning, Carolyn.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to council. In two thousand and twenty-one, the County of Elgin, along with the City of St. Thomas and the Town of Elmer, adopted a community safety and well-being plan. This plan outlined five priority areas for preventing adverse outcomes that require emergency responses and improving the well-being of our communities. One of these areas is substance use and addiction. Local data shows that our youth in our communities are using substances at higher rates than the provincial average. Southwestern Public Health has been leading this priority area, and they are adopting the Planet Youth Model to reduce substance use in Elgin County, the City of St. Thomas, and Oxford County. Developed in Iceland, the model focuses on creating environments that discourage substance use while strengthening protective factors. The Government of Canada has announced a twenty-point-two-million-dollar investment in a program to prevent substance use and related harms among young people. To apply for funding, communities must enroll in the Planet Youth Model, which includes a thirty-thousand-dollar cost. Southwestern Public Health and a community coalition formed by the Elgin Community Action Network for Children and Youth are seeking support from member communities to contribute to the enrollment cost and enable an application for federal funding. If implemented, the program will reduce substance use rates among youth and contribute to community safety and well-being. The coalition has also approached the City of St. Thomas and the County of Oxford for support. They have not requested a particular amount and have expressed a willingness to collaborate with the county on this initiative, regardless of whether financial support is provided. Staff are seeking council's direction on this request, and to support that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for that report, Carolyn. I'm going to open the floor up to any questions on the Planet Youth Model and the request. Counselor Cookett?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you too, Carolyn. I certainly support the concept of the Planet Youth Model. I'm just a little unclear as to exactly what it does, because when you read the Planet Youth material, they talk mainly about data collection, which is certainly important in dealing with this area. And the second point I'd look at is that the coalition is formed by the Elgin Community Action Network for Children and Youth and led by the Southwest Public Health. So the request for money, is this a request from an outside agency or is it a request from Southwest Public Health? Because requests by outside agencies is a little tricky right now in terms of the money. And along with that, if I may, the amount of thirty thousand dollars, are they asking the county for thirty thousand or are they asking for any kind of amount to help with the thirty thousand?
Thank you, Counselor Cookett, through the warden, to you, Counselor Cookett. So they are seeking any amount from the county. They need a total of thirty thousand dollars, and they have not requested a specific amount for that. The request did come directly from Southwestern Public Health. I did have a conversation with them regarding their request. And regarding the Planet Youth Model, my understanding from that conversation was that it's largely data collection, and that data would identify the factors that make it less likely that youth will use substances. For example, if there are many after-school activities like sports that youth can participate in, if that is one of those factors that reduce substance use, they would identify if the community is deficient in that area, and if increasing those opportunities would decrease the likelihood that youth would use substances. So that is the idea behind the Planet Youth Model.
Okay. Counselor Cookett?
To follow up on, they say the request comes from Southwest Public Health. Southwest Public Health is an organization that it really doesn't ask, it demands, you know, any money that they ask, the municipalities have to give. So this is kind of an optional amount that you're saying you don't have to give this, right? All right, I would be supportive, of course, but I'm just trying to figure out the actual role that Southwest Public Health is playing in this. Thanks.
Okay, Deputy Warden Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to Counselor Cookett. Do you remember talking about this at Southwest Public Health? Briefly?
Okay, Counselor Noble?
Through you, Warden. Is the thirty thousand an application fee?
The thirty thousand dollars is to enroll in the Planet Youth Model. So you first need to subscribe to that model before you can apply for the funding. So that is strictly the enrollment fee for the program.
Okay, Counselor Jiguer?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So yeah, I support the model. I think that I'm glad they're looking at it, and I think making data-driven decisions is a healthy thing. However, I feel that Southwest Public Health has already come to county for an additional ask, which was directly linked to local issues such as, you know, substance abuse and the like. So to me, I feel like we've already funded without a specific ask. We've already collectively agreed that we should top up their funding as per their request so that they could address specific issues. And to me, it's just, what we're hearing, and I'm glad to see, is that they would be using some of that funding to select a specific model that seems to respond to their needs. So I would not support additional funding, but I would support that they continue with this model.
Deputy Warden Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess that's what I was kind of getting at, was we've already, a lot of the money that we've added up for is for data. That's already very clear. So...
I would agree with both of your assessments on that, the fact that if there's already programming in place, that it's simply a reallocation of that particular funding if they wish to proceed down this road. Having sat in on the delegation with the Minister Tavolo on the Planet Youth Initiative, yeah, there's interest out there. There's no commitment from the province, of course, and it's a federal initiative. But we need to learn more about what this is, and as both of you have indicated, that if we've already got the funding there for preventative measures, just reallocate and take your your enrollment fee out of that. But that's just my opinion. Any other comments or questions from members of council? Counselor Cookett?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess I'm also not sure where the thirty thousand dollars is going. Is it going to Southwest Public Health in order to help with, you know, increased people to do this, or is it going to the Elgin Community Action Network for Children and Youth, because that's a local group that is working on this as well. So where's the thirty thousand going? Do we know?
So the thirty thousand would be initially going to Southwestern Public Health, who would then be giving that to Planet Youth. So that would be a payment to Planet Youth.
Counselor Noble?
Through you, Warden. The Planet Youth Model, is this whole conversation about supporting that, we're supporting youth in Elgin County with addiction? Because without us having a lot of information about the Planet Youth Model, and if we're being asked to support that, it would probably be nice to have more information on that model. That's where the thirty thousand is going, correct?
Okay, my understanding is, of course, the thirty thousand is for the enrollment into the program in order for them to seek granting opportunities at the federal level. I think the two things that are being asked today is, one, is the county support the concept of pursuing the Planet Youth Model, and the second one is, are we willing to fund some of this enrollment fee? So I think those are the two questions before us. Counselor Cookett?
Sorry, I'm still not clear on the thirty thousand. Carolyn, you mentioned the thirty thousand is going to Planet Youth. It's going to Iceland, is what you're saying, right? It's going to the overall organization of Planet Youth, so it's not being used at all locally for anything other than enrolling in the program.
Deputy Warden Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I guess and it's very is brought down to a small nutshell. Parents aren't home as much because they work longer hours. Kids are left to to their own devices, and this is a way to, like, before and after-school programs to keep kids in a school, in a controlled environment, sports after school here and there. Just keep kids going in the right direction instead of the wrong direction when the parents aren't home, or or just when just keep them occupied, keep them busy.
Anyone else? Yeah, I think Catherine's still looking for a little direction here and consensus from council. I'm hearing that there's generally consensus for support for the model. But I'm not hearing any support much for funding the initiative. I got that. Counselor Jiguer?
Mr. Warden, I would support a motion to that effect.
Okay. Andrew, Counselor Sloan?
Thank you, Warden. I would second that motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Very brave without even hearing the motion. Good for you. Yes, read it out, and we'll see if we got some reaffirmation from our mover and seconder for that.
Resolved that the report titled Community Safety and Well-Being, Substance Use, and the Planet Youth Model from the Manager of Economic Development, Tourism, and Strategic Initiatives dated September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four be received and filed, and that the County of Elgin express support for the Planet Youth Model, and that Southwestern Public Health reallocate existing funding set aside for preventative measures to enroll in the model.
Wondering if a little more wordsmithing might be helpful, like, we could ask them to. We can't really direct them to, can we? Yes, Blaine?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. What I would suggest is we can certainly work in the, into the motion that Carolyn and I could reach out to the Southwest Public Health and work with them to do a bit of analysis on our current funding levels there and how amounts could be reallocated. We could certainly offer that assistance to them.
Counselor Jiguer?
Right, I'm wondering if we need to mention anything about the, how, I don't want to direct them how they spend the money. They might find the money somewhere else through another organization. So I'm wondering if the motion could just end at that we support the model. But we just support the model and that no, I don't know if we need to say that additional financial support is, you know, it won't be forthcoming, it won't be forthcoming. But I, I, I'm not 100% comfortable with providing direction on where they ought to find the money.
It's tempting though, isn't it? Just a it's in principle, yeah. Concept and principles, yeah. Okay, reread the second, reread the second clause. I think everyone's clear on the first clause, okay? To receive for information. Second clause, please.
That the County of Elgin expressed support for the Planet Youth Model.
I would agree, Mr. Warden. That's all. I, I think we need to say is express our support for the model.
Okay, would you want to offer direction to staff to continue to explore it with Southwest Public Health? Or just leave it alone? Okay, Counselor Sloan, you seconded that. Is that okay with you? All right. Having heard the motion and it's duly moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Oh, quick change. Got it. Okay, that's carried. Thank you. Moving on then with 6.6 from the Manager of Economic Development Tourism and Strategic Initiatives, the Elgin County Tourism Wayfinding Strategy. Carolyn, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to council, Elgin County Tourism and the Engineering Department have been reviewing our signage program and policy. An initial report was presented to council in March with the goal to redesign the signage environment to address challenges with the program and the changing navigation environment. The objective is to enhance visitors' wayfinding experience by providing clear, visually appealing signage that showcases significant tourism areas, experiences, and clusters within the county. The main features of the updated policy include prioritizing signage for key tourism destinations, including rural downtowns, communities that include beaches, marinas, and public boat launches, and other arts and cultural districts. Using standardized symbols for consistency and coordinating the design of new wayfinding signage with the installation of new gateway signage. During the review process, we carefully considered the purpose of wayfinding signage. It is to help visitors coming from outside Elgin County find a location they have already decided to visit. The reliance on wayfinding signage has decreased with the increased use of other navigation tools. However, it remains an important element in our efforts to welcome visitors and ensure that they feel confident about where they are going. We also use marketing tools to increase awareness among potential visitors of all the possible destinations they could visit in Elgin. So these are activities that happen before the visitor reaches Elgin County. So this marketing includes highlighting individual businesses so people can add these locations to their itineraries as they plan their visits. To support our marketing efforts, a new tourism website will be launched at the end of the year to strengthen the promotion of tourism businesses to potential visitors. We will include listings for all our tourism operators, and these listings will include maps to help visitors pre-plan their trips. So now I would like to share with you some preliminary designs for the new gateway and wayfinding signage. So again, these are just some preliminary designs that we have been working on with engineering and our communications department. So this first one is an example of a gateway sign as you're coming into Elgin County. We're still going to tweak the font and the colors and things like that. But the concept is to highlight the rural landscape and Lake Erie. So we have the rolling hills with the lake in the background. And then our logo in the corner, which represents the sun there. So welcome to Elgin County. And then if we could move on to the wayfinding signage, our second example. So this has a similar format and look, but we would be highlighting one of our destinations. For example, Historic Sparta in Elgin County. And then a separate tab on that sign would have all of these standardized symbols. And these would be based off of the, the symbols in the TODS program. So the tourism-oriented program, you see those signs on the 401 and other provincial roadways. So the tab would be separate as experiences change and come and go. We can update those symbols. So again, these designs are preliminary. We will tweak them and certainly are happy to hear feedback on that as well. But, so again, doing the gateway signage and the wayfinding signage at the same time will allow us to build the brand in the county, have consistent signage. Engineering has included the cost of replacing the existing gateway signage in their 2024 budget. And the costs associated with implementing the new wayfinding signage will be considered in the 2025 budget deliberations. So with clear direction on a policy and a way forward, we can present the costs to council for the 2025 budget. As with all of our initiatives, we will closely monitor the implementation of the new wayfinding signage program. As we gather feedback from visitors and tourism operators, we will identify any deficiencies in the signage environment and collaborate with engineering services to ensure that the signage program continues to guide visitors effectively to their destinations. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for that report. Before I open up the questions, I'll ask the really perhaps dumb one. On your wayfinding sign, you had the, the, the rolling countryside represented by green, the lake represented by the dark blue. What was the light blue in the corner all about?
Sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
The light blue in the corner, in the left-hand corner. I don't know what that was to represent. A rolling wave?
Both the colors of blue represent Lake Erie. So different shades.
All right, well, thank you for that. Any questions for anyone or from anyone? Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Carolyn. Under tourism points of interest, talk about historic downtowns, beach communities, arts and culture, that kind of thing. Like we have some pretty good family activity facilities near us. Would that be an opportunity for that to be highlighted? And we also have some really good specialized farm markets out there, which I'd like to see enhanced because it's a good market and we're not really getting out there. So just a question. Thank you.
So with the first phase of this tourism signage, we have decided to focus just on districts or clusters where there's more than one experience available to visitors. So that is what is included in this policy. However, if there are tourism experiences that don't meet any of those criteria, that's the next part, looking at where are the gaps in this and what do we need to do to fill those gaps? So again, we're getting away from providing signage just to individual businesses and instead having signage for tourism experiences. So this is a conversation that we've had with several other counties. And I do know Norfolk County expressed a, a similar direction. They're looking at their wayfinding signage at the moment as well. So we'll be highlighting all individual businesses on our tourism website. And the signage, for now, we are focusing on a cluster where there are multiple experiences available. So one example of that is the Bacchus Page House in Dutton Dunwich. So that would be an arts and cultural district. They have the museum there. They have hiking. They have snowshoeing in the winter. So there are multiple experiences available at that site. So that site would be considered a tourism district or cluster. So I don't know if that helps clarify that. So again, any site where there are multiple experiences available for a visitor.
Anyone else? Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Warden. I, I think it's a great start. I think it's a much more efficient way of doing it. And who knows what the tomorrow will bring. And, and we see advantages to extending the program to different areas. I think that's a good direction to go.
Well, thank you for those comments, and I would agree. Deputy, excuse me, Counselor Jagir, for motion and the works here.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Through you. Yeah, just, I, I agree it's a good start. But we are predominantly a rural county, which is the opposite of clustered. So that means that our experiences are spread out. So as Counselor Widner mentioned, whether it's family experiences, markets. So I'm a little bit concerned about how it would leave out in, in several municipalities where there are no specific clusters and yet really important places that are well-visited and popular. So I would like to make sure that then we, this may be like phase one, but perhaps consult with, with the businesses or what would be a solution. But I would definitely want to make sure there's a commitment to revisiting that because the logo talks about or shows that, you know, that this is a rural area. And we're adopting a policy that's focused on clusters. So there's a bit of a disconnect there for me, but, but we have to start somewhere.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Anyone else? Okay, as in with your comments, Carolyn, I, I appreciate the fact that, yes, start out with the clusters, identify the gaps, and then see if we can propose solutions moving forward and how to accommodate those. But Counselor Widner is correct. There are, and Counselor Jagir as well. There are in the individual attractions out there that don't necessarily meet the cluster definition. Not everyone's a Bacchus Page, and that's a great one. You know, I would assume also the Jaffa, you know, would be considered a cluster under that definition. Although it's Thames Valley, but still far spring water. But there's, there's some gaps that's going to have to be addressed. But this is a good start, I think. Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you. Just to follow up, would it be worthwhile looking at, is there an opportunity for somebody to maybe buy some tourism signs? Or, you know, contribute to them because they, you know, want a particular area, like they already have them up. And I don't know, will they be coming down?
So our tourism signage will be coming down. However, the TODS program is still available, so all of the signs on the 401 and Highway 3 will remain. So that is always available to businesses. And some of our businesses do have signage on the 401 and Highway 3. So the major routes through the county will continue to have signage for, for individual businesses. So that, that will remain in place.
Okay. Anyone else? So Carolyn, this contemplates dealing or doing away with the, the signage program that we currently have and such that we're selling subscriptions, so to speak, to individual businesses out there.
That, that is correct. So again, focusing on experiences. And then again, if we identify any gaps and any ways that we can assist visitors find those rural locations, we will then think about how do we best construct a program for that. So we were deliberately doing it step by step so that we can monitor and, and adapt as needed.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that clarification. Are we ready, Catherine? Read it and see how it goes. Okay.
Resolved that the report titled "Elgin County Tourism Wayfinding Strategy" from the Manager of Economic Development Tourism and Strategic Initiatives, dated September 10th, 2024, be received and filed, and that council replace the County of Elgin Tourism Signage Policy 1.2 with the revised Elgin County Tourism Wayfinding Strategy 1.2.
Do we have a mover and secener? We have Deputy Warden Jones? And Counselor Hens? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it's carried. So we look forward to moving and then developing and, as you say, filling the gaps with strategy or policy down the road. Okay, thank you. Moving on with 6.7, the Senior Planner for the new 2024 Planning Statements, Provincial Planning Statements. Good morning and welcome Diana Morris, our new Senior Planner. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to do a quick introduction here because I don't think everyone, anyone's had an opportunity to meet Diana. So Diana Morris is our new Senior Planner. She comes from the County of Brent, but also has quite a mix of experience also in the private industry. So welcome, Diana. We're really looking forward to working.
Thank you, Matt, for that introduction. Good morning, Mr. Warden, members of council, staff in the public. As Matt has mentioned, my name is Diana Morris, and I'm pleased to be before you for the first time this morning as Senior Planner with Elgin County. I'm looking forward to working with you all to ensure that development occurs in a timely and efficient manner throughout the county and associated local townships. As you're all aware, on October 25th, 2022, the Ontario Government introduced the More Homes Built Faster Act, which included a review of the provincial policy statement and the growth plan to support the changes in the act, also known as Bill 23. On August 20th, 2024, the Ontario Government released the new PPS, now referred to as the Provincial Planning Statement, introducing changes in how planning for growth is to be carried out in the province. It will come into effect on October 20th, 2024, and will apply to all decisions by planning authorities made on or after that date. As outlined in my staff report, there were a number of changes to the new PPS, which I will briefly summarize. First, due to the elimination of the growth plan, municipalities no longer need to plan specific population and employment targets to a horizon year. But the respective official plan is required to supply designated land to meet population targets for a minimum of 20 years to a maximum of 30 years based on local needs. Second, expansions to settlement areas can be considered at any time as municipal comprehensive reviews are no longer required. However, expansions must meet certain criteria that planning authorities must consider. For example, whether the need of the land can accommodate the proposed uses, there's availability of infrastructure, the avoidance of prime agricultural areas, and compliance with minimum distance separation. Third, strategic growth areas and major transit station areas should be the focus for growth. Lastly, in relation to employment areas, municipalities can consider the removal of land from employment areas subject to the determination that the land for employment is no longer required, infrastructure is available for the proposed uses, and the municipality has sufficient land dedicated to accommodate future population growth for employment. Currently, staff are reviewing the newly adopted County of Elgin Official Plan to ensure consistency and conformity with the new PPS and aim to provide any required changes to the official plan for re-adoption back to council in the coming weeks. Pending any changes, the official plan would need to be re-adopted by council, followed by resubmission to the province for final approval. Thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Diana, for that report. Does anyone have any questions? The PPS has been a long time coming and it's been gone through several reiterations. And I know that some of the initial concerns we had with it a year or so ago were addressed through this version. Any questions, any concerns for staff? I believe we still have a brief response period to this.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Leave the, the time has passed, so it just, it gets implemented October 20th.
All right, thank you for that. Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Diana or Matt. I'm not sure who's going to answer. But so with regards to employment lands and residential lands, how is I guess the acreage that's needed for employment lands, how is that determined for residential growth? Because employment lands can be a mass Because employment lands can be a massive complex with very little employees or it could be a very small complex with a large employee base. So how do they determine the differential, the ratios between employment and residential?
Microphone?
Sorry. So if, so if you determine your industrial lands, you don't have capacity for industrial lands, residential lands to cover that. What's, how do you determine exactly how much residential land you need for your employment lands?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to the council. Basically, through the PPS, they implement that it's up to the local municipality on, based on their local needs. So any applications that do come forward for specific lands, that each township needs to evaluate what their local needs are.
I can add to that as well. We've gone through the exercise, our land needs assessment. With the exception of, I think it's Elmer, all of the other LMPs have an access of residential lands currently. And that's already considering what's designated as employment. So currently, we're all okay in terms of what we need for residential land designations. So if, if a developer were to come in to say, want to expand a settlement area, you know, they're gonna have to make that justification that, okay, well, you'll need, you need more residential lands and you've got servicing and, you know, X, Y, Z. They have to fulfill all of those conditions. So although it is getting easier to do settlement area expansions, it's not a complete walk in the park. There is still gonna have to be some justification provided.
Okay.
Yeah, just thank you for that. It's just, you know, you can have a warehouse with 10 people and if it's 10 million square feet or you can have an Amazon that's got 1,500 employees in it. So just a bit of a dartboard, I think, throwing dirt at a dartboard.
Absolutely, absolutely. Councillor Hens?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Past PPS directed settlement areas to full service areas, a water and infrastructure. Is there any leeway in the new PPS as far as settlement areas with not, not complete municipal services?
Through you, Ms. Warden. Sorry, turned off. Again, when any new applications are put forward for any expansions or adjustments, municipalities must consider the need to designate the land to accommodate any range or mix of uses and then whether there is sufficient capacity, either existing or planned.
Okay. I guess, and I'll use our example, if I could, follow up, Mr. Warden. When you get wastewater treatment over capacity, it kinda limits what you can do. So my question is, could we expand settlement areas without wastewater services?
I think it's actually, the way it's worded is actually the other way around in that parcel services are going to be okay, but I think wastewater has to be provided, which is counterintuitive to what I would think. Like I would think water would have to be provided. You have your own private septic. But I think the way it's worded in the PPS now is septic has to be provided and water can be like on a well by well kind of basis. Again, that part doesn't make a ton of sense to me because I would think you would want the safety of having municipal water being provided. And then, you know, if you have septic failure, you know, then what? So I think the idea is that it alleviates the possibility of septic failure and then hopefully individual wells don't dry up.
Okay. Anyone else? Councillor Widner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a question then, if I'm hearing this right, and we have a village with lots of capacity for the septic, but the wells has been holding us back because we can't do that. But now would that maybe be allowed to have us grow with individual wells, as long as there's proven capacity, there's water there?
Yeah. Through the Warden, I think, I think there still have to be justification that through a geotechnical study that that water is available. If I'm hearing it right, it sounds like water may not be available when they're drilling wells. So, you know, there has to be water availability in order to justify building more homes. Like that's in the building code. That's outside of the Planning Act. So there's, there's got water availability still needs to be there.
Follow up, then that could be part of the building permit process as long as they had it tested and there's adequate capacity because we have been doing that. So I believe BAM has too, if that's correct.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. It's part of where you don't have full servicing, particularly in our area, that there has to be availability of both quantity and quality of water in order to permit any particular development. But that's with any consent. Okay. Any other questions? What I'm hearing here is nothing really surprising coming out of this. It's just maybe a toned down version. I think where the county was focused before was on the opportunity that was being presented to permit severances on agricultural land, which seem to have gone away, which is a good thing, I think. And although it's a little, from my perspective, sitting here saying, no justification report for village expansion, providing it meets certain criteria, guess that's the rules. We're gonna have to work with that now. So. Okay. Well, thank you very much for bringing that forward. The nerve of them announcing this on the, at a conference, eh? Okay. Catherine, please?
Resolved that the report titled New 2024 Provincial Planning Statement PPS from the Senior Planner dated September 10th, 2024 be received and filed.
We have a mover and seconder, please. Councillor Coquett and Councillor Widner will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Okay. We have a public event out at the Heritage Centre at 10 o'clock. I propose that we recess now. Stay within hail, councillor Sloan. We'll get back to you when we reassemble. Okay, so we are now at recess. Welcome back. We left off at section 6.8, a report from the Director of Planning and Development, the Elgin County Centralized Planning Services. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning and thanks very much for, for sitting in on this, on this discussion about the centralized planning services presentation. I provided a little slideshow here that I'm gonna take you through just to talk about sort of the work that I've put into trying to figure out what, what the county needs and what all of our local municipal partners need in terms of planning service. And I should say, I should start with, the goals of a centralized planning system are, there's a few of them. But the three that I've really tried to highlight is that there's cost effectiveness in it and that internal staff are generally less expensive than consultants. There's consistency and I think that's something that we can all appreciate across the county. Planning across the county will become more consistent, will have similar policy frameworks that will be prepared by the same team of people. And we can work towards creating similar planning fees as well. And I think that's something that, when I look at all of the different planning fees across the county, they're all a bit different. It'd be good to have some consistency in that as well. And lastly, accountability. Centralized, we'll have centralized leadership and reporting. There will be a prioritized service for the LMPs. And that's not something that everybody gets through their consultants right now. Improved customer service, and that's improved customer service, not just for the LMPs, but improved customer service for the public. And I think that's what we all, we could all appreciate. And I think the last thing I'll just say about this is this centralized planning team is not, it's not a county planning team. It's an everyone planning team. The idea behind creating this is to create it for you, to create it for our local municipal partners. And we need to, we need to create a team that's, that works well, that fits in well at all of the local municipalities. So with that in mind, I set out when I started to try to understand what would, what would work well here in Elgin. I started by looking at other two-tiered planning systems and there's quite a few of them across Ontario, but specifically I looked at the rural municipalities that have a similar framework to what Elgin does. I looked at our local municipal planning needs. From there, I created a phased growth strategy and projected what staffing needs we would have. Next, understanding cost and budget requirements. All of this is going to have, have a cost. And then the last, the last thing is forms of compensation, how it's all gonna be paid for. So in terms of a two-tiered planning review, I looked at, the factors I looked at at each of the municipalities across Ontario was population size, planning service level, so how applications are taken in, reviewed or approved. Looked at policy planning projects as well, official plan review, zoning bylaw updates. There's all kinds of policy work that needs to happen in the county across our municipalities. Different forms of service. So having people be in the office versus virtual attendance. The number of the LMPs that were serviced at all of those counties across Ontario, the number of planning applications they had in a year, the inclusion of municipal support staff. So in some cases, they had support staff at each, at the local municipal level. Sometimes they didn't and the county had to provide that. A compensation review, planning team composition. So I looked at how many staff did each have, what were their job titles? What support staff were going to, were needed as a spinoff of having that planning team? And then the last, just additional comments from all of the directors. So from there, based on all of these factors, I looked at Elgin County has a similar sized structure and potential planning application volumes similar to Perth County, Middlesex County and in some respects Oxford and Bruce County as well. Oxford is actually a really good example of a two-tiered system where the, where planning is being done at the county level. And it's been done for quite, quite a while. So they've had the ability to work out the kinks and solve some of the issues that come up in that kind of a system. They also have some interesting policies right in the Planning Act that dictate how that structure works for them. So after I had that comparison figured out, the next thing I did was I went across our county and I met with our local CAOs and in some cases our mayors. I was really trying to get an idea of what our planning needs were at each of the local municipalities. And after I looked at how many applications they had, what their internal staff complement was, you know, the number of pre-consultation meetings they had, the types of applications that they're seeing, what some of their development and growth pressures were, I then put together a plan for how that would work at each of the lower municipal partners. And at full capacity, taking on a workload of between six to seven LMPs, there would be somewhere between 325 to 350 planning applications per year. And then in addition to that, we would also be, we're looking at doing a lot of policy updates as well. That used, for the most part, 2003 statistics. 2003 was actually a bit of a lower year than other years. 2021, 2022 were higher years in terms of planning volume across Ontario. 2023, things started to taper off and 2024 is looking a lot like 2023 so far. So I think 2023 is probably a good year to use because there was a bit of a boom around the pandemic and planning. So I think we used the right year in terms of establishing how many applications we would have in total. Based on, I should also mention that based on the conversation with town of Elmer staff, it's unlikely the town would require planning services for development applications. Without the inclusion of Elmer, there would be three, about 325 planning applications a year. But we did have a chat with Andy, their CAO, and it does sound like they would still like some policy work done there. So in addition to the planning applications themselves, there's also pre-consultation meetings. And those meetings do take quite a bit of staff time to prepare for. There will be around 335 pre-consultation meetings in a year. And there's, you know, there's, there's a lot of time that goes into that, not just from the planning department, but also, you know, the local engineering departments, building departments get involved. There's quite a few people around those tables. So those meetings generally need to be coordinated by somebody and that's something I could see this team fulfilling. The next couple of slides just go over the specifics that I just talked about. So not only did I look at the number of applications, but I also broke it down by type. And this is important because in order to understand the team that we'll need to facilitate and review all of the development projects, we need to understand what kind of development we'll be seeing. So it's broken down by type. You know, we've got minor variances, zoning bylaw amendments, site plans. There's subdivisions and official plan review. Those and consent applications, those last three, the approval is done here at the county level, but there's still quite a bit of back and forth and organization that goes on at the local level. So it's still part of the workload. Can move on to the next slide. And one more, please. So based on all of those factors, I then looked at, okay, so here's, here's the number of applications that we can expect. And by LMP, I put together a bit of a phased strategy for how to initiate and integrate the LMPs into the strategy. Phase one is complete. Phase one was, thank you very much, hiring, hiring myself, getting a senior planner, having a junior planner. We've promoted our planning technician, Paul, into the junior planner position and hiring a planning administrator. So phase one is complete. We are up and we are running, we're reviewing applications, we're providing comments. We'll be having more reports coming to this council for, you know, official plan approval in the near future. Phase two is where we start to take on the planning work for some of our LMPs. Phase two, at this point, would be looking at taking on Southwold and Dutton Dunwich. At this time, Southwold does not have any planners. They've unfortunately lost their only planner and I think that's the third time that's happened within, within the last year. And from my understanding, the consultant in Dunwich would like to retire in November. So there's an immediate need for those two LMPs. And in review of their number of applications and type of planning work that needs to be done there, I'm proposing that we hire one to two additional development planners, an additional senior policy planner and that senior policy planner is going to start working on all of the policy work that needs to be done in those two townships. And if there's room across the county as well. And because we are developing a team now that has a trickle-down effect in our GIS area where we'll need an additional GIS planning analyst. Our current GIS planning analyst provides services already across the county to our LMPs on a sort of service by service level. Their workload is maxed out. So when we start increasing our mapping requirements and our planning needs, that, that area of the county will be affected as well. And so I've outlined sort of this in phase two, three and four. In this slide, I provide my estimation of what staff we will need at each of those phases. And this is also detailed in the report and attached, and attached as an appendix. Next slide, please. This is the same information, but a little bit more detailed. Um, this is uh the same information, but a little bit more detailed. This is appendix C of uh of the report. Uh, this is a cumulative total. So uh phase one, um, like I said, that's complete phase two. Wherever you see red, that is what is being added to each phase. So by phase four, you know, the lists are getting quite long, but the duties are are getting uh quite high as well. So um that it's just a quick explanation of how uh that chart works. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so then when it comes to understanding the costs, um, there, there will be operational costs um associated uh with uh with each phase. Um, phase one, we're looking at an operation cost of around three hundred and forty-five thousand. And then it it just kind of keeps increasing. The the reason there's a range there is because uh in phase two, I was proposing to hire one or two uh development planners. And again, it's really dependent on the workload. If I think, I think starting off with one would be, would be great. And if we find that we are having a hard time keeping up, um, we could look at um higher, hiring the second. And then each phase, obviously, the operating budget would increase. Um, I should note, though, that the operating costs here, these are base values of the the positions that uh would be requested. This does not include things like uh Omer's or uh, you know, de- development costs, uh, like, you know, uh, having to go to, like, not having to go, but going to training or office furniture, computers, all those little kinds of things that come along with all of this, that would be about a twenty percent, twenty-eight percent increase from, from what you see here. Just, you should know of that, though, and it's also highlighted in the report. All right, we'll move ahead to the next slide, please. So in terms of forms of uh compensation, there are a few ways of of doing this where you know, we, either, either the 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 taxpayer picks up the bill ultimately, or we uh do it through planning application fees. Uh, I come from a a system in Brant where uh most of the planning uh costs were picked up by application fees. So there, so there wasn't a a cost, there wasn't that much of a cost to the taxpayer. So it's really um, you know, uh, uh, it it comes down to whether or not you you are okay with the taxpayer paying um for uh that service, or you would like the developers to pay for that service. So and again, we we can have that discussion, but I'll just quickly go through sort of how these three would work. So the the tax levy contribution uh would work by adding up the total operating costs of the county's planning department and split it equally. Uh, the county tax increase across the seven LMPs. The benefit to this form of compensation is that the cost is divided and spread out to all residents across the county. In this system, the resident or taxpayer would be the primary contributor to financing the county's planning department. The system is the most simple and easiest system to administer. Next up would be hourly billing. Um, so some of our uh LMPs are already using this uh with their consultants. Uh, the hourly billing system would work by the county providing uh planning services to subs- to specific LMPs and then invoicing those municipalities for the hours worked on various development and policy-related planning matters. Uh, through this system, only those LMPs benefiting from the planning services would be invoiced. Municipality would then take this cost and have it compensated by way of local tax increase to its residents. In this system, the local taxpayer would be the primary contributor uh to financing the county's planning department. And this system would be the most challenging and complex system to administer, at least I think. And then the last is uh planning application fees. So the, this would work by the county. This is at least how I'm proposing it. Um, the the county creating a standardized application fee schedule for all participating LMPs that would be aimed at achieving, achieving cost recovery of the department's operating costs. The county would set the fees, collect the fees, and use the fees to finance the planning department. In this system, only uh policy-related projects would be required to be compensated through either hourly billing to the participating LMPs or through the tax levy to all municipalities. The intent behind this system is that development pays for development rather than it being passed to the residents. This system may be difficult to set up and manage as all LMPs would need to support the fee structure for it to work. And also, a percentage of the fee would need to be uh portioned out to each uh participating LMP for helping with technical review of the application. Like I said, at the pre-consultation meeting or at, you know, any, any consultation meetings that would occur thereafter, there's often uh quite a few local staff that get involved in those discussions. You know, that time equals money. We just got to make sure everybody's compensated appropriately for it. Um, the fee schedule would be recommended by planning staff and approved by county council. So while most planning departments across Ontario are not a hundred percent funded through their planning fees, the fees help to mitigate much of the tax burden to the taxpayers and help to encourage adequate staffing levels, provided the process uh to process applications in an efficient and timely manner. And that's really what it comes down to is like, we want to make sure that in order to provide good customer service and or provide a service level um that our our LMPs are happy with, that the residents are happy with, and we need to make sure that we have enough people um to be able to process those applications, because otherwise, you, there could be delays, and that's not what we want. Um, this year, the county's planning department is expecting total revenues of a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, this amount could have uh and been easily doubled if the planning fees were more reflective of a hundred percent recovery rate to staff time. So earlier in the slide deck, I showed that our operating cost is going to be around three hundred and forty-five thousand. We're collecting around a hundred and fifty thousand, so we're going to have a bit of a deficit this year. But like I said, if we, if we had aimed at setting our planning fees at at a cost recovery, we would, we wouldn't be in a deficit. And to be honest, like, when I look at our planning fees, they're they're quite low in comparison to um other developing uh municipalities across Ontario. And I think it's probably time that we, we stop comparing ourselves to um other smaller rural areas, and we start looking at ourselves more as a, you know, a key player in the development industry. We have a lot of growth pressure coming here, and I I think it's probably time we start looking at it like that. As part of the two thousand twenty-five budget, planning staff will be uh conducting a cost recovery analysis of the county-level planning fees, and we'll bring an updated planning fee schedule forward for county council's consideration. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. We've, I've got some, some recommendations, um, but I'm very interested in in discussion. Um, like I said, this, this planning centralized system, um, it's not just a county thing, it's an everyone thing. So everyone's, uh, it's very important to me and to our team that everybody is on board. And however, we need to structure this to get everybody on board, I'm I'm totally happy making, making that review and and changes. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation, Matt. I uh certainly appreciate it. I I assume there will be uh numerous questions around the table. I'm going to lead off with one. Um, does the model still consider local uh coordinators and the local LMPs? In other words, are they going to be municipal employees, local municipal employees? Are they going to be county employees? How are these applications going to be received? And if they're local municipal employees, then you talked about having a portion of perhaps a fee available for pre-cons. How do we pay for the coordinator? Is that included? Just throwing that out there right off the bat.
Uh, great question. Um, across Ontario, um, different counties deal with it differently. I, where it works really well, the locals have their own planning coordinator. Um, and then a portion of the the planning fees, the pre-consultation fees, they go towards paying that that position. So um it 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 does work quite well. I think having that local person taking in applications, having somebody there five days a week, uh, having a familiar face, I think that's pretty important. Um, when, when people come through the door. The developers generally, they'll submit their applications online, um, but there's quite a few, the mom and pops operations, they're coming in, they, they want to sit down with somebody, they want to go through the application, they want to make sure they have it right. And I think having somebody locally that can do that with them is important.
Thank you for that. Counselor Cocket.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Um, couple of comments and questions, I guess. Um, when, when, when the county started this process in terms of planning department, I thought there was uh the understanding that uh there was kind of the option that um, that it would be the discretion of individual uh lower-tier municipalities to join. Uh, I don't see anything in this proposal that deals with the um with the agreement, agreement of lower municipal uh councils in terms of approving this plan. Um, I certainly appreciate the research that you put into this, it's fantastic, and certainly appreciate the, you know, the initial collaboration you made with all of the different uh staff in all parts of the county, but I I I'm assuming that the, maybe I shouldn't assume because there's a saying that goes with this, but I do, I'm assuming that the county intends to to pursue the option that LMPs will have uh the, the ability to opt in or not. And and I would also like to see that each of us um have the opportunity to endorse and approve this particular plan, because it is an agreement with the LMPs and the county. And I think it's important that, that each municipality approve of this. So um, I'm looking at uh to what kind of an agreement does county want with the LMPs? And what kind of an agreement do the LMPs want with the county in order for this to go forward? So maybe uh, I don't see that in here, but I'm not sure whether um, if we approve of this, whether that means that we can't go there, or whether we should defer this particular whole thing until uh each of the LMPs has had a chance to take it to their own councils and bring it back in terms of uh agreement and endorsement. I would prefer that we defer it until uh each municipality has the chance to kind of look at the agreement and and pass a council resolution on it. Yeah. So anyway, thank you, mister.
Okay, yeah, yes, Matt, please.
Uh, just, just to comment on that uh through, through the word and um, absolutely, this is a volunteer system. I don't think there is any um, any inkling at all to force any of the LMPs in into the system. Um, for instance, Elmer has a planning department that's working quite well. Um, so um when I, when I went and spoke to the staff uh at Elmer, there was maybe some need or some request for policy assistance. So, you know, the, the agreement with the county in in Elmer might look different than the agreement with the county in, say, Malahide or or Bayham. So I think there, there could be some flexibility in what that agreement looks like. I know Nick is probably behind me thinking about in terms of the agreement, how, how that would be structured. Um, and I think it's also important, like you said, to to be able to go back to your councils and have this conversation to make sure that everybody's on board. It's a pretty big decision. Um, and I think it's important that everyone's uh paddling in the same direction. If, if, if there is a request, we can put together a a baseline uh template for what that agreement would look like. Um, and then, you know, we can have that circulated and included in a further discussion.
Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, through you to Matt. Um, great report. Um, it's a, I have to remind Counselor Cocket, you stole our planner. So that's why we've had problems. She's a very good uh planner. Um, anyway, that being said, uh, we discussed this at length last night at our own municipal uh council meeting. Um, there are some questions, obviously concerns and angst amongst uh members. Uh, I think it's a great start. Um, I think the, whatever agreement we have needs to be, have some flexibility into it with, uh, everybody has different needs, and I think that has to be recognized. Um, one of the questions came up, will uh the local municipal partners have any say in uh future hires? Uh, because obviously, I I think it looks like uh the junior planners will be designated to certain municipalities, so there's consistency over time. Because everybody has different uh zoning and uh like planning documents. Um, so the, the one question was, will we have any say in any future hires that may be involved with our own local municipality? And ongoing uh conversations about performance of any individuals working, um, were, were two of the concerns uh brought forward last night. Um, and I guess, uh, is there a an end, uh, if a municipality decides to go back to their own, will there be a clause in the agreement to allow a municipality back, back out of that uh agreement? Those are the three that were really seem to be. I think uh Southwold's on board, it's just the concerns of of changing, and and we, we do recognize we need to change this. Uh, holding on to good planners is next to impossible. When you uh see about three conservation authorities looking for planners right now, uh, the whole west end of the county has no planner right now, we're uh hiring, hiring out, so um, just some of the concerns, but I think in all, overall, I think, I believe Southwold's on board to at least get this rolling.
I can provide a a response to to some of those. Our, I don't think our uh our director of HR is not in the room right now, but um, I will speak to them about um having someone from the local municipality join in on the hiring process. Like, if if that's something that's important, and it sounds like it is, then um, it maybe Lisa could, could join us for the hiring process. But again, I'm, I'm, you know, we, we can work that detail out. Um, Nick is here. Um, I, maybe Nick, you could quickly speak to uh the agreement and sort of how we could structure that for for the LMPs.
Good morning, Councilman. Thank you, Warden. Um, so through you, Mr. Warden, Council. So the agreement can be structured in accordance with uh what the local needs are, like, it'd just be a sort of normal party-to-party negotiation. In an ideal world, for the county, there would be uh what Matt described, I think, as sort of a base level template. So the overall terms and conditions of how the department operates would be in the main agreement. But then there can be a schedule of a, it'll call, I guess, a level of service. Um, so by way of example, in the Elmer example that was discussed, where they're looking more at policy and not development, that would be set out in a schedule to be clear about um, that that's the kind of service that's being provided. That's where the staffing aims are looking to achieve that level of resourcing and so on. And uh in terms of other clauses of of whether or not um, uh, municipality could back out of the agreement, all those things are legally possible. And so it would just be working through the uh mechanics with the local municipality of what that looked like. Um, and and usually those things, I'm speaking in generalities here, um, go to the level of notice that's required because of the county staffs up in terms of resources. You would want a long tail in terms of the length of notice, the county would need to scale down its resources as well on the back end if a local municipality was no longer interested. And um, I, I think Matt had referenced the other uh two-tiered systems nearby. I th- I think have experienced some of these um uh issues over the years that they've had the same sort of thing established. And so fortunately, we're not uh inventing this uh scenario. And and we would look to successful structures, including the service level agreements and legal agreements, and sort of replicating the the most optimized uh version of that.
Deputy Warden.
Uh, one thing, as far as uh the fee structure, I still think uh development should pay for development. I think that's the most reasonable way to go. I know it's more, will be more uh more onerous on the county to to do that, but I think that's the fairest way of doing it for the taxpayer. And and the, the people that are uh applying are, should be the ones that are paying, not uh on the general levy.
And um just one more point you had mentioned, um, you know, reviewing the system uh on an annual basis to make sure it works. Um, I would uh welcome a system where, you know, we're reviewing it at the county level, and then we also get feedback from the LMPs about how it's working for them. And then I envision there being an annual report that would be brought to council just to talk about the metrics. Um, you know, number of applications, number of pre-consultation meetings. Um, like, we, we can look at both qual- qualitative and quantitative data. Um, you know, good customer experience is more of a qualitative thing. It's hard to make that determination unless we talk to you to find out how things are going and how those relationships are going. Um, so yeah, I definitely see uh something coming on a, on a yearly basis at least um to make that report.
Counselor Hens.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, Dutton Dunwich is on the top of this list to join. Um, we've tried to keep our council informed best we can through our planner, my CAO and myself, but now we're getting down to the details and I haven't had a chance to getting down to the details and I haven't had a chance to fully explain to my council what this entails. I'll be able to do that now. So I can say Dutton Dunwich is is on board with a bit of hesitation on that. But as everyone knows, we have a consultant that desperately wants to retire. And our concern is, how do you find competent planners in this environment? They're hard to find. So I can assure this council that Dutton Dunwich is on board with the concept, and we will try and firm up our commitment to this very soon.
Thank you. Thank you for the statements. Counselor Sloan.
Thank you, Warden, through you to Matt. Thanks, Matt. Interesting and very thorough presentation, which is appreciated. Couple of questions for me. One has to do with the this role of a secretary treasurer, which is being, could you just help me out? That's my first question. If you could just help me out a little bit with that piece. Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, absolutely. Through the warden to Counselor Sloan. So right now, each of the locals has their own version of committee of adjustment. Generally speaking, it's it's being done by your your councils. It's going to the same meeting, basically. And an idea, and this is just an idea right now, an idea I had was creating a separate committee of adjustment that would that would hear land severance and minor variances all in one shot. It would be a separate a separate group that would be appointed by the councils and a position for Secretary Treasurer of Committee of Adjustment would be required in order to do implement that plan. It's just an idea at this point. If it's not something that the LMPs are interested in, if everyone's happy reviewing minor variances, it doesn't have to be part of the plan. I'm just looking at efficiencies. I'm looking at trying to save some of your time, because sometimes those minor variances, like a one meter height difference for a shed is maybe not the most important thing on your agendas. And that's something that could be covered through a committee that would be appointed by your councils. So just an idea at this point, but I've included it just in case it is something that everyone's interested in moving forward with.
Yes, Counselor Sloan.
Thank you, Warden. And again, thank you, Matt, through the warden to you. I appreciate that you talk about metrics and customer service being qualitative versus quantitative. And just to follow up here, is it is it sort of and to you and your team that are taking this on, I think we're in good hands to start providing a service which otherwise hasn't been provided in certain ways. But is it is it fair to say, and you talk about an annual report? So so that's kind of a two pronged question here. Number one, is it is it is it remedial for me to say, okay, we have so many applications, here's the cost. So we go back and let's say when we get the report for 2024, we say, and it's hard because you, you know, it's only six months. But is the metric of how much per application something that we can always provide to council saying, okay, here's what the cost was. Currently, we're in phase one. So that's a metric to look forward. Is that is that a fair metric to evaluate? So we've got the cost and we did X number of applications. We know it was X dollars per cost. So that's that's sort of the first phase. And secondly, do you feel, having worked in in other places where there's been, you know, you've brought innovation to it, as we know, is there any argument to say, here's so so the buy in, how councillor hence spoke about, you know, his council being interested and some municipalities have more needs than others? Is there any benefit to saying to start your function and to make sure your function succeeds? Here's what we're going to offer the lower tiers, sort of a take it or leave it. Here's the amount which will be put forward to X municipality regardless, because we know that some municipalities need more than others. So I guess what I'm trying to ask here is that if we had a blanket cost per municipality, depending on, I don't know if it's population, but to say, here's something you can access, the county is going to provide this, we hope you'll take advantage of it. And and if you're not going to, then you've got to let us know because we, you know, Matt and his team need to go from phase one to phase two, etc., as things ramp up. So how does that go to the lower municipality to say, someone like Central Elgin that might be looking at, you know, options in the next year or so? What are our options if we if we if we sign up? If we don't. So I'm appreciative of you coming through with this report very much. And just like the other counselors, want to kind of clarify here where where we could make best use of having this service in the county. Thank you, Warden.
And through through the warden to Counselor Sloan, I think I can answer both questions with one answer. The the number of staff, the cost to the county to hire the appropriate team members to provide that service level to the LMP is very dependent on the number of applications and the type of applications that each LMP has. So, you know, Central is is a busy place these days. And you know, and it's going to have, it does have, you know, the statistics show it, it does have higher application numbers than some of the other LMPs. So the resources to provide adequate planning services, good planning services to Central are going to be higher than another LMP. So if and keep in mind that this phased approach, this is this is just a proposal right now, we've already actually had to adjust it a little bit because of Southold losing their planner. So everything is adjustable. We can we can have LMPs join earlier or join later depending on their needs. But I would say that the cost is very dependent on the the amount and type of work that's that's required in each LMP, and we would have to make those adjustments as we go. If you're asking, what would the cost be for just bringing Central on? It's an analysis I'd probably have to do and get and get back to you in terms of like getting figuring out the staff complement needed for bringing on Central and then the the compensation for those positions that we would create. Whenever we create a position or, you know, or multiple positions, it has a trickle down effect to other other resources in the county. So I kind of alluded to it with the GIS analyst position. That that's a position that needs to be created once we hit a certain number of planning staff, and we're already getting pretty close to it. Another area that's going to be affected is IT. So IT has a certain threshold for what they can provide based on the staffing complement. Planning is a very data hungry department. We store a lot of information. We retrieve that information often. IT will need to purchase a larger server or another server in order to compensate for for the staff staffing needs. So it's something that I've proposed as sort of a phased approach. It can be amended. It can be changed to however it works best for all of the LMPs. And I would just say in terms of cost, yeah, we'll just we will figure it out as we go.
Okay, Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to Matt. So yes, first, thank you for doing all this research because it is this council expressed them some needs and asked staff to look into this. As I'm hearing my colleagues, they concur with everything that was said, and what seems to be emerging is a shared services agreement, perhaps as opposed to a centralized model, like a phased and centralized model. And so what I would suggest, so because what I'm hearing is that there's almost a need for a menu or a sort of à la carte kind of, and I think we've done that with with HR, with legal services, where each municipality, and I think even with GIS, where we said, this is our needs and this is so this is your baseline cost. And then the more services you need, then the more, you know, fees you pay. So so it sounds like that this is where the the conversation is is heading. So I think it would be interesting. I think it was mentioned before that perhaps for today, we we table this because it's a lot to digest. And each municipality could be invited to then locally analyze. So what does that mean and express back to the to the county what their projecting projected needs are? Is it is it policy? Is it policy and development and planning? Is it? So then there could be some financial modeling and perhaps coming back with a revised proposal. I can understand if Southold and Dutton Dunwich have a more emergent need and want to move forward more quickly. Those could be more local agreements, but it sounds like even in those cases, there's a need to just go back and have each LMP analyze this, ask very good questions. I think the same questions are popping up in Malahide in terms of accountability, customer service, hiring, and so sort of a bit of the need to do a use case like flow of who does what. Because we can't, there's maybe an oversimplification a little bit in the reports. For example, on Malahide, yes, we have an external consultant, but we also have full time technician on staff plus GIS. So moving to that model eventually would not, we can't, and we have a community relations person who does liaison and all of that. So even moving to that model would not remove the cost totally or the staffing totally locally. So I think those things need to be mapped out. But this research that you've pulled together provides an excellent basis to get those conversations to the next stage. So thank you.
Counselor Cuckett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just wanted to support what Counselor Shiger has said. As I said earlier, I think we should defer this and and bring it back to council. So certainly, are you willing to make that a motion? Because I'll second it.
Might be a little premature just yet, but we're heading down that road. Yeah, but thank you for that. Yes, to a certain extent, with the local with the meeting with the local CAOs, in some cases, the elected officials in the area, you have tried to identify what those particular needs are. And yes, they're very, they're high level summarized, and I get that. And I appreciate the fact that there are certain resources that are available, different local municipal partners than others. And it will have to be fine tuned. So I'm wondering if maybe, and this is coming back to your point, it is prudent at this point that there is a motion of endorsement from the local municipal partners before we go too much further down this road. Like Counselor Hens, BAME's very much looking forward to this. We've been using external planning consultants for years, and we're looking at this as an efficiency and a cost savings initiative. And I realize that there are some challenges down the road in terms of harmonization of a fee structure, perhaps, and various other zoning bylaws and whatever else that is going to have to take place. But it's very interesting. And it's, I think, Matt, you've done a good job of getting this to this point so far. So I'm wondering what council's appetite is right now. Like, I'm going to look to Blaine, see if he's got some advice. And I know Deputy Warden has his hand up. And we'll go around the table from there. Blaine?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a quick question to members of council. Would it be of benefit? Because I recognize the need that, you know, and as Matt's described, this is a, you know, a collaboration, a partnership that we're looking to continue to build and to provide, provide more consistent, more cost effective services across the county. Would it be beneficial for you folks if, and yes, I'm going to all untold you, Matt, if Matt came to one of your council meetings and did a brief presentation on this to, you know, and be there to answer any questions from your your local councils, would that be of benefit to to members of council?
Deputy Warden.
Definitely a benefit based on what I've heard from Matt this this morning, I think the comfort level around Southold will be a lot higher now. We do have the benefit of Mr. Hicks, short term, that something we need to move on soon, I guess I would say. But yeah, definitely, Southold would benefit from it. Maybe some others more so than, I know Lisa's been working close with Matt for a while on this. So we had a fairly lengthy discussion last night. It's just the what I heard this after this morning, it sounds much more promising.
We'll just add in there that I think you're absolutely right. And I think, you know, Counselor Cuckett and Counselor Shiger, you're bringing about points forward. I know that at the BAME table, council may not have had that sign off to do this. But at the executive level, and you know, it's talked about within the office, and we're looking forward to moving ahead. Generally, yes. But there hasn't been a particular motion to say, yep, let's go for it. So maybe that's something that's prudent we need to do across our partners before we invest too many more resources. Counselors, you here?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And just to clarify, I think, for example, for Malahide, it would be more a discussion with staff first to see what what Malahide would be interested in accessing services. And then it could be a joint presentation like a like this presentation would not be ready for our council, because our council would not know yet. So what our needs are, and, you know, projections and staffing needs. So I think it's it's more a presentation led by Malahide staff. And then with support from the county, who could come and explain what is available, what could be available. So I think it could be worked out. I think the need, once again, is going to be a little bit different at each municipality.
Counselor Cuckett.
I just wanted to to, you know, my comments to what Counselor Shiger said, our 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 staff is going to be presenting a report at our next council. I think that should happen first before we talk to Matt. So smart down. Thank you.
Counselor Hens.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think every council is at a different stage on this. We're a little farther down the road because we had to be. Matt, I know you have met with our CAO and our planner, and I believe I sat in on one of those meetings as well. So I could say we're all in, but council does not have the information that I have at this time. So I will, we meet tomorrow. This discussion is is on the agenda. If I could follow up after that, and if council wishes and Matt can find the time, I think that would be a good idea, because he could deliver this message that he is prepared, well done, better than I can, and answer all the questions. I believe that Dutton Dunwich is fully invested in this and on board, but I don't want to speak out of turn.
Right.
And just another point, I think the goal should be full cost recovery on on planning services as well. So I would echo what Deputy Mayor Jones said, we need to find a way to to get to that point.
Any other comments from anyone? Matt, does it sound like a logical next step for you to have those conversations with the at the local level? And each presentation from the local levels will need to be tailored. You know, obviously, we're different.
Absolutely, absolutely. Just everyone reach out, let me know when you're ready. And I'm happy to come speak to your councils.
Well, again, we'll see what the process is, whether it is the local staff bring the idea to council first and then entertain a presentation from you. I think you know, you know, not having sat in on the other meetings, but with BAME, you have a good idea of what we're looking for. And I suspect that you do have that idea across the local municipal partners. So. Catherine, have you got something? We keep changing things for you today. Good.
Resolved that the report titled Elgin County Centralized Planning Services from the Director of Planning and Development dated September 10, 2024, be received and filed, and that the decision to implement a phased approach to planning services be deferred until Elgin's local municipal partners can consider the model proposed and provide feedback regarding what level of planning services are required, and that at the request of each local municipal partner, the Director of Planning attend each local municipal council to present the proposed planning model and receive feedback, and that county council approve an update to the bylaw to appoint a Secretary Treasurer of the Elgin County Land Division Committee to appoint the junior planner as Secretary Treasurer.
Okay, having heard the proposed motion, any discussion or shall we, let's get a mover and seconder before we'll put it on for discussion? Yeah, I know, I seen his hand up. I didn't know if he had a question or if he was looking to move. Yeah. That's to move? Okay. Do we have a seconder? That's to move? Okay. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Cookett, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Then that is carried. Thank you. And thank you very much, Matt. Moving on with section 69, Director of Financial Services Treasurer, Grant and Sponsorship Policy. Good morning, Jen.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to council. We have a, earlier this year, council had asked staff to identify and define a process that incorporated best practices and parameters around funding requests received by the county from external non-core services and community agency for council's consideration. The report and policy before you contains the culmination of much collaboration and research to bring forward information relative to this policy. There is a lot of information to unpack today, so we'll, we have prepared a companion PowerPoint presentation for reference purposes so that we may have opportunity to provide a high-level overview of the policy itself. The next slide. So the scope of the policy outlines the reason for it. The opportunity, we have an opportunity to streamline requests. So once we got into reviewing this policy, it was recognized that there were several other areas of the business that was experiencing the same sort of pressures. Staff and, staff and counselors administering, administering the RIPA committee have experienced a significant increase in funding requests over the past few years. This program provides sponsorship, sponsorships to fall fairs, festivals and events. Economic Development also receives many requests and has brought forth reports to council outlining these requests to sponsor and support external events that were not known at the time of budget and where Elgin may not have opportunity to participate in other than funding. The addition of large grants would introduce yet another opportunity for groups to access funding. Therefore, a streamlined and defined approach with one intake point would help to remove the possibility of multiple requests from individual groups and to ensure that all applications could be reviewed with equal opportunity by receiving the same information within a framework that provides a defined request dependent on the size of the request. The policy should also enable collaboration. A policy such as this is very complex and to define its parameters required much consideration and discussion. Representatives from RIPA, Economic Development, Finance and Legal were all involved in the development of the final product that you have received today. Several meetings, staff, during the several meetings, staff were able to share challenges, best practices, expectations for an improved policy and research of other external sources where this policy and type of policy is used. We identified that there was only one ratepayer and that we would want this policy to include the sharing of information so that successful applicants receiving money at the county level could be identified for our municipal partners to ensure that only one source of funding may be received per group. We expect today that council would also want to fully discuss the policy and that we may not be able to deliver an answer to this complex issue at today's meeting. Provide direction via process for council committees, public and staff. Throughout this process, our goal was to provide clear direction using a process that would help to define parameters for both the public and staff relative to the delivery of a policy related to grants and sponsorships. We were able to start with the processes used by the RIPA committee as a base and expanded upon what worked, further define for clarification areas of uncertainty and improve upon what functionality was not working. Additionally, we were able to incorporate the parameters to manage larger grant requests into this process. Obtaining more information for council's consideration of larger requests. In order for council to be able to make a decision about this policy, the report that accompanies this presentation's policy contains several discussion points relative to municipal spheres of jurisdiction for which council is responsible. A table is included that briefly reviews some of the relative legislation and acts that municipalities have responsibility for and must provide locally for reference and review at this time. In an effort to obtain examples for council, staff looked both externally and internally for examples of best practices. Externally, the MFOA County Treasurers Group meets quarterly and through that group, there is a wealth of knowledge and experience with good discussion. Questions regarding the gifting of grants identify that all councils struggle to meet public expectations in this area. Many have processes to manage the ass and keep it within reasonable parameters that provide flexibility as municipalities are sometimes unable to provide any grants due to budget constraints. Our neighbors to the north, the County of Middlesex, do not have a grant program at all. The city of London is currently going through a period of significant growth and are looking to cut back their current grant program. Committee members are asking the hard questions there, such as what, why are we funding other groups to fix their gymnasium floors while we cannot repair our own? Internally, we are, we have looked to define council strategic priorities that are aligned with this policy. We noted that there are several areas where council has identified funding shortfalls. In these specific areas, our ratepayers are having to provide support over and above. There are initiatives such as Terrace Lodge Fundraising Committee and the Wardens Golf Tournament, where we do our own fundraising to try to offset these costs. Additionally, the county will be embarking upon taking out approximately 25 million in debt to fund the Terrace Lodge rebuild. These repayments will, will be added to the tax base over the next two years, which will drive up the rate by approximately 2%. This significant increase does not add service, but enhances a service area that we are responsible for. Council may wish to consider if a policy such as grants and sponsorship optically aligns well with current and future county areas of responsibility. Outline other funding options that set limits on expectations. Based on the examples obtained, staff felt that it was very important to set limitations on funding ceilings and outline a process that segregates requests into categories for the public, council committees and staff to simplify decision-making. The next slide provides an overview of the funding streams. Next slide. Oh. There will be four funding streams that applicants will be required to choose between. Applicants will provide information on a standard application relative to the grant type that they would be seeking. Admin services will receive all the applications and will score them using a standard form in, to ensure that applications provide all information being requested. In the first example, the base community grant program is a simplified version of the current RIPA committee program. Sponsorship is limited to a maximum of $1,500 per applicant and applications will be considered by the RIPA committee. In the second example, economic development partnerships will be used for all county departments to manage funding requests received within their department. These will be limited to events that provide a strategic benefit to the County of Elgin and where the county may actively be involved. Applications will be considered by the executive leadership team. Community development partnerships include grant requests that are no more than the prescribed 10% of a total budget of a project being presented. Small projects would represent projects valued at 15,000 to 50,000, where a grant between 1,500 and 5,000 is being requested. These will be reviewed by RIPA committee and will be contained within the parameters of any existing budget left after requests for sponsorship are exhausted. If no budget remains, applications will not be moved forward in the existing year. Large grants are for projects valued over 50,000, where a grant over 5,000 is being requested. Qualifying applications would progress through to council should council choose to approve a funding stream for the current year budget. Next slide. The next slide outlines the funding sources of these grant streams. Community Grants Program will be maintained as it currently exists on, as outlined on screen. Economic Development Partnerships are funded as it currently exists through departmental budgets with alignment to council strategic priorities and will ensure that agreements are made with funded sources so that county staff input in, have input into events in question, which highlight the county as a partner. Community Development Partnerships, small grants will be contained within the budget of the RIPA committee as per outline on councils, on Schedule C. Staff anticipate that the sponsorship program will be less demanding on the current resources in order to free up some of these funds for this purpose. On the next slide, we see we'll review large grants. These grants will be funded only upon approval by council each year using one of three options provided in the policy. There will be an upper limit of one-half, 1% of the prior year's levy that may be allocated to projects. And the example that I gave was one-half, 1% of the 2023 levy would be approximately $215,000. Staff, staff have built in the ability for council to choose a pause on the large grants program, funding as needed. Support of any given project is limited to 10% of the overall total project budget. Support of any one project may not extend beyond the current term of council. Council should be aware that proceeding with, proceeding with this policy will require that they revisit grant requests each fiscal year as council will be determining support and make final decisions on qualifying applications. Process overview, be the next slide. The entire process is outlined in the policy. Applicants will fill out Schedule A and submit it and then the necess, with the necessary documentation to support their request by the deadline dates. Admin staff will take in applications and score them using a schedule, Schedule B. Qualifying applications will be provided to either committee or council if the application qualifies by meeting the information criteria provided. Approval applications may be granted funds based on Schedule C and large grants will be required to fill out an agreement. A sample is provided as Schedule D. Admin staff will revisit application report backs using Schedule E to determine that applications are complete. Incomplete report backs will be, will cause applications from not qualifying in the next year. So that puts the onus on the applicant rather than on staff to follow up. At this time, staff have provided the necessary information relative to the adoption of a grants and sponsorship policy. However, the decision now remains with council. I've provided three high-level options for consideration at this time. Next slide. So council has the option to adopt the policy as presented to provide reasonable parameters and guidelines around the funding requests. Option two, adopt the policy but revise the policy to outline that large grant requests as referenced in the policy are not to be considered to enable financial restraint. That would still enable small grants and sponsorships to remain within the scope of the RIPA committee. And option three could be to follow our Middlesex partners and remove grants and sponsorships from the budget completely and restate that the policy, in the policy, that the grants and sponsorships are not provided by the county. So those are the options that are before you today, and I expect that there's a lot of questions, so I'm here to be happy to answer any of those.
All right. Thank you very much, Jen, for that report. And I suspect that there will be a good discussion, a lot of questions. Jen, I'm going to lead off with one, and I don't know if you can answer this today or not, but generally, what is the total amount that the county offers through sponsorship and/or grants annually?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Currently, the RIPA committee is $75,000 approximately. Each year it increases by the CPI, which will, will remain. And then through the Economic Development Group, I know that Carolyn has been sponsoring events through her budget, her normal budgets. I don't know. How many, how much have you sponsored this year? Approximately another $5,000 to $10,000.
What about the Elgin incentives? Would that be considered a sponsorship? Which is, it'd be another 80,000?
Yes, we do have the Elgin incentives. We also have, is that the CP, that's the CIP program. So that's another 80 per year.
Okay. Just trying to get a handle on what we currently participate in. That's all.
That, this, this policy would not affect the CPI, the CIP program. That's a different thought process. It's more for business-related items, so.
Right.
An expansion, so that, that is not included in this policy.
Okay, thank you for that. Let's open it up for some general discussion. What's council think? Have you got any questions? Counselor, Counselor Sloan?
Thank you, Warden, through you, and thanks to Jennifer for bringing this forward. Obviously, an interesting account and what others are doing and to you and the team for compiling all this. It's appreciated. I, I know that, you know, we'd asked about this in February with respect to some requests that came forward. I, 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 I don't, I have a question and I also have a consideration for an option four. My concern through you, Warden, to Ms. Ford is that if we look at some of the specifics on this, like if it's a religious organization. So if, if, if we dig deeper into that, you know, the, the hospice with related to St. Joe's Hospital, which I think is a Catholic organization, are they precluded? So I, I don't want to spend the time of this council getting into the, the details, but I wondered if there would be consideration given to an option four as the creation of a sponsorship committee that would have representation by council and staff. So that when these came forward, you know, we centralized things a little bit as per your plan, but that we had some council overview of what's coming forward and that we could then make recommendation which would go to the broader council. So I appreciate that there's been some time and effort put into this by all the teams. I realize that our, our goal is that not to have ad hoc responses. But what I also see in the proposal, if we use groups that we give annually money to and they're on a, on a, on a, on a continuous basis, are they going to have to reapply every year? So there's just a lot of questions, if that's fair. And I wondered about an option for whether the council would consider a sponsorship committee made up of staff and of council to, to make sure that we, we gave a thorough look to, to these applications. The other piece is, is that one of the metrics I think that should be included would be how it affects the people of the county. So if it's something that's maybe in central Elgin that doesn't affect others, or it's some that affect the whole county, I'm not sure how we, we come up with that, but a, a good first start. But I wondered about if there was any appetite from the council on, on the consideration of a committee. So thank you, Warden, and thank you, Jennifer, for this.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Jen?
Through you to Counselor Sloan. I mean, I have mentioned it in my speaking notes, but certainly in the policy, there are guidelines for us to follow council strategic direction. So whatever the strategic priorities are, we would follow those to ensure that certain areas of the strategic plan were being met first, as opposed to just generally giving out money to all applicants. So I think that applications will be guided to tell us how does this fit with our strategic priorities? Why do you need our support and, and so forth? So that would be guiding. As for a sponsorship committee, we sort of already have one within RIPA, so it might be something that could be an extension of the RIPA committee. I don't know if that's, there's any appetite for that, but that certainly might be an opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen. Yeah. Deputy Warden Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, you asked Jennifer questions about CIP and a couple other, we couldn't hear because of the
Oh, I'm sorry.
Response.
I was generally just trying to get an idea of what, from a quantum level, the county currently offers from a sponsorship type of programming. We know that the Community Grants Program is roughly 74, 75,000 and then indexed annually CPI. The Elgin incentives program, which falls outside of this, but still, it's something falls outside of this, but still it's something that the county participates in, is funded through uh it's a vacant commercial tax, but it's $80,000 annually. Uh and uh what does Ekdev sponsor annually? Anywhere between 10, 15,000 a year. So that's just generally, just just trying to put a quantum on what we do. Um and I was using that because Jen uh in her policy in terms of large grants, if if this is something there's appetite for council, it was proposed in a cap of one half of one percent of the former year's tax take. So for the 2023 example was 215,000. That's all I was trying to get.
Okay, thank you. I just, we we couldn't hear.
Oh, I know it's loud back here, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, uh who's next? Uh Counselor Cookett?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Um, thank you for this report, Jennifer. Certainly a difficult report to make in terms of uh, you know, uh whether we support needy items or not. I guess looking at the recommendations in terms of which options that we would pick and option number two, which deals with uh not having large grant requests, I guess. And so my question is that the option number two would still be determined, the amounts are uh would still be determined by RIPA, I guess. That is the basic organization which would hand out the requests. Is that correct? Okay. The second question I have, I need fo- follow follow up on that is that uh and I think it was mentioned by uh Counselor Sloan, there are certain organizations that we sponsor every year. I think they become a line item. I can't think of very many. I think of one of them, I think, is the Art Gallery, which is a line item, which is a an outside organization. Would this become part of the policy or is this just? You know, don't want to open a can of worms here, but is this part of the policy or would it be something different?
Uh through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Cookett. As it relates to RIPA right now, there is a line item on the budget that we add seven uh CPI to every year. Currently, it exists at 74, 75,000 dollars for the 2024 year. That's not something that we um bring to council each. I mean, it comes through council in the budget document, so um that is certainly there. But the large grant item would be something that would come as a separate line item for council to determine, is this a year when we will have um the ability to add that extra one half of one percent onto the levy in order to bring this item forward for this year's budget. So that's sort of in advance of the intake on this large grant policy. Um so then people will know whether or not council is going to be funding a large grant policy in that current year, so.
Okay, Counselor.
Um I follow up. Um just to be clear, the option number two, he talks about small grants and scholarships. The maximum for small grants is 50,000. Is that right? So there wouldn't be anything beyond 50,000 that would be considered in option number two.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Cookett. In number two, um the the project worth would be 50,000. The grant value would be 10% of that, so it would be 5,000. So that would be within the scope of that group, yes. So there's a there's a 10% cap on a project value. So you you'd be coming to the group saying, we have a project worth $50,000, and we're asking for a 10% um grant towards that pop that particular project. So it wouldn't be something that we'd be funding the entire amount. Um and that's to keep sort of that parameter around um the the policy, yeah.
If I can just
Please.
One more. So just trying to be clear that the largest uh grant then under option number two would be $5,000. Right.
Just to follow up on that uh that that uh project, um are we talking about programming or are we talking about capital?
Uh through you, Mr. Warden. In that particular group, it's currently now programming and or capital, so I left it as such. In the large grant, it would just be capital.
All right. Thank you for that. Counselors, you here?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um I'm, I would like to shift the discussion a little bit as stream by stream because I'm finding in the options that are provided, the three streams are completely embedded, and yet we are being asked, I think, to make some changes and considerations for different stream. So if you bear with me, stream number one is the community grants as it exists. If I read correctly, in the report, there's a suggestions that we would slightly modify this program to not allow uh multiple asks to multiple levels of government, i.e. lo- local municipal partner. Um so if that's the recommendation, I would not support that. Um because first off, those investments in the community, we know we get the return threefold between, you know, the volunteer um involvement and the economic um you know, spinoff. And what will end up happening is that then this organization will end up asking twice as much to either one of the two and is likely not to get it. So to me, um stacking is quite acceptable. The federal, provincial, municipal, like often do it in in different programs. And I agree, there's only one rate payer, but if the organization demonstrates the needs, because I like the policy the way it is now where you have to show your financial statements, demonstrate the need. And if you show that you're being transparent, you get 5,000 from Malahide and you're asking 5,000 from the county, and you show that you need 10,000. Then I would say, yes, like, let's not add an additional burden of cross checking uh as long as it's all transparent. So I would like um to make sure that in whatever recommendation resolution we end up is that the basically I see stream number one as uh remaining status quo. That would be my recommendation with this event, 75,000 with CPI.
Okay, just
Staff want to comment on that?
Okay, I just wanted to clarify one thing. The current policy that community grants program fund local municipal partners or any level of government. Are you suggesting it should be opened up to that? Or did I hear it wrong?
No, I'm just clarifying that I think there was a suggestion that moving forward, we would stop stacking.
Staff, uh please, Jen.
What my thought process on that was, um we wanted to just be transparent with our municipal partners to ensure that if that was your choice, you may not wish to also fund that group. But we would give you the information on who was successful, and then that could happen. When it comes to areas of government, we were talking about like we wouldn't fund Malahide Council specifically. So that's where that um reference is coming to. But yeah, certainly, if you want to have your own grant policy, your own sponsorship policy, and we give you that information, you can do what you wish with it.
Yeah, and I and I think it's it's uh the onus is on the applicant to basically show all their sources of funding, like I would hate to add additional uh work. So as long as stream number one is status quo, um then I'm good with that. Um stream
Just clarify, Jen, stream number one, uh what you're recommending within the policy is actually a capping of festivals and fairs to a $1,500 cap rather than uh they're asking for $10,000 now. Now, because of the number of applications, we've been prorating, and it's getting down to that level. Uh looking to Deputy Warden Jones and perhaps Counselor Woodner confirming that's what we've struggled with for the last couple of years. So I guess what staff are saying, there are some modifications in option one, just to make sure. Yeah. Jen, please.
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. Um so stack stacking's allowed, but as as per the schedule C that I've presented today, there is a cap on that group now. So they would be getting a standard application. If you're fee a fall fair festival event, you get $1,500. That would be the end. So it wouldn't require that weighted average, like we go through a lot of calculations and computations in order to try to accommodate everyone. There has been um some people who have figured that out. So there's like the averages is uh higher now because we're being asked for more money only to stack that weighting so that they would get more in the end. So it's trying to just put a limitation parameter around what we're willing to do at this point. And then if there's a a legit program or po- or project that's coming forward, it just leaves more money for that to be able to be handled in a different manner. So yes, there is a small change to that group. Um it's just the actual capping of of the requests.
Sorry to have interrupted you, counsel, but please.
That, thank you for clarifying that. So that's why I'm I'm thinking it it's for me. Anyway, the way my mind works, it's easier to just tackle one stream uh at a time. So I don't know, I'm members of the committee can comment probably more accurately. I'm not in favor of caps because I think it removes the situational, like every year's a little bit different, every fair is a little bit different, their situations change. Um so it allows the it to me at a cap, I understand maybe make it more expedient, but um I don't know, it it loses something in the process and and the reason we have a committee who can then apply judgment and context to each application. So I would not be in favor of that.
You know, it's interesting because in my mind, uh what we should be trying to encourage is more programming or innovative programming and not being a continual funding stream for organizations just because that's what we've always done. So I, you know, it it's a balance here, and uh I would rather have something new come along to give them a hand up to get them started and try to get them weaned off onto some independence. Um some of these applicants that come through, I'm not sure that they really need the county funding based on their financials.
Yeah, which is why uh through you, Mr. Warden, that I think the the criteria does score the application based on demonstrated need, and that's why they have to provide financial information. So that's why even if um somebody applies for the 1,500, they could also get zero if they they don't meet that particular criteria. Perhaps the the current formula is is too convoluted and and people are trying to game it. Uh but like I said, I I would hate to remove the whole point of having a committee because at that point, then let's not make them apply. Let's just give everybody $1,500. And so um I I I'm not sure if there was a request from uh the committee, from the rural initiatives committee to to modify that. Um but I, like I said, I I thought that one could be status quo for now while we tackle perhaps the others.
Just clarification, there is a current cap in place. It's $10,000. Okay. Okay. Counselor Sloan?
Sorry, I'm turn pardon me through you, Warden. I'm turning off my video because I'm having battery issues, so my apologies to council. Uh Jen, uh through you, through the warden to Ms. Ford. Well, a- again, I'm going into the the bit of the weeds here, but when it talks about service clubs, I just wondered if you could answer for me. We had something come forward from Mayor Hance um in the last few months that had to do with a service club and helping with respect to, I think it was a home or something. I I I'm not trying to piece it apart, but I don't want to preclude uh this council from being able to help like we did with the situation in Dutton over some land. Am I am I over? Am I looking into this to uh with to find a tooth comb, if you will, Ms. Ford? Through you, Warden. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Uh Jen, uh I think you understand it was regarding the uh uh what do you want to call it? Uh we donated some land down to yes, surplus property to uh Caledonia Three. That's what it was.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to uh Counselor Sloan. That was um outside of the scope of this particular policy and would be in the future. So I I don't think that it would be would fall under that. So I I would I would say that's not possible within here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um Deputy Warden Jones?
I I guess uh in response to Counselor Ziegler's uh comments about RIPA, I I know the last two years it's been a challenge and uh I I think there does have to be some sort of modification. Either you increase the amount or we reduce the amount we give. And I really don't think there's too many other options there. It's uh uh last year was challenging trying to I wouldn't say decide, but there's a there's a lot more ac- uh applications than previous years.
Yeah. Okay. Please, Counselors, you're
So um would your recommendation is it are members of the committee in favor of the what is being recommended than is with the cap? That the cap that's being proposed be make it easier?
I I wouldn't. I I don't know. It's it's the number of applicants, so realistically, it's being automatically capped because of the applications, but
Yeah. I think uh the applicant or the onus would still be on the applicant uh going forward to prove the need and how it's going to benefit the county and uh the residents uh as to whether they even qualify for that. But at uh at the end of the day, they aren't getting much more than that 12 to 15,000 dollars because that's what the pool's available at. And maybe we are, maybe we need to tighten up the eligibility criteria even more. Yeah. I think we kind of sidetracked you a little bit, Counselors, you're. We talked funding stream one. Did you want to carry on with number two or?
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure how um you wish to proceed and if we take tackle, you know, one stream at a time.
Yep.
Uh but yes, I do have comments on each stream.
Sure.
Um so and I I will just say on stream one, I'm even hearing from members of the committee, I'm still not 100% convinced that a change will help. It's still going to be challenging, and uh so perhaps the status quo would be simplest uh here. Uh stream two, I'm still a little bit confused um in terms of sponsorship. So if there's somewhere we would consider cutting is that's the one I would eliminate. Um I think these seem to be like ad hoc uh sponsorships. Um I think it would leave a lot of gray area as to trying to determine if it's aligned with strategic priorities. And I feel that when it comes to businesses, we have strong programs with Elgin incentives. We have so we have opportunities through um economic development to to have those kinds of programs. I don't know. I think if there are some events uh that in the past we have sponsored, I could see that in hindsight, they could have applied through uh the the community grant if they were organizing a conference, if they were um I think that's where they belong. So rather than adding a stream, adding another committee, adding more staff time, more applications to to be processed. Um I would just redirect whatever funds we have in that area, redirect everything through their community grants because that's where innovation would come in to spur new events and encourage businesses to organize new events. So that's my recommendation for stream number two is to eliminate it.
Okay, just to help clarify and cement for council members, uh Jen, identify a few of these sponsorship things that we do. I can throw some out there, and I I just want to make sure I'm I've got it cemented in my mind right. For example, sponsoring the Impact Awards or sponsoring the Bridges to Better Business or the Women in Agriculture events, or the list goes on and on, the uh Women in the Political Leadership or something along this line. That's what I'm wondering. Are these the events, sponsorships that we're talking about? Okay, and currently there aren't really any caps on these particular programmings, and what you were suggesting was trying to establish some kind of parameters on how to deal with the sponsorship side, to give some guidance.
Yes, and I think um from our perspective um in some of these instances, we just are funders. We we already fund some of these groups, and then they're coming back to ask us for more funding where we don't have any actual um say in what's happening at the event. They're just really asking us for another four thousand dollars in order to have that event. So it becomes a little bit difficult to determine whether or not it's value added or not value added. And so just to give staff some ability to, you know, say, hey, fill out this application, does it meet our strategic priorities, gives us sort of an opportunity to just sit back and 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 recognize whether or not it meets with our needs.
Okay. It's not easy, is it? Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I recall that the original impetus and rationale coming up with the grants policy was to give us guidelines to deal with very large requests. And I'm not sure how that fits into any of these particular options right now. I'm sort of confused about that. I, you know, I don't think any of these would give us any guidelines in dealing with huge requests like the hospital request, for example. Looking at option number one, and my understanding is that that the reasonable parameters have been changed from ten thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars in terms of the cap on what we give. And I think that's too much. I think I think we should put it somewhere in the middle, but that's that's another thought, but option number one seems to be the one that still is the the better one to do, given the choice among evils. Number one is the best one. But in terms of guidelines for a large request, how does that fit into any of these particular recommendations?
Jen, do you want to tackle that right now? Or do you want to, shall we carry on? I'm hearing some hints across the table of getting into that larger discussion.
I can discuss it now if you like.
Go for it.
So option number one, the reason for the policy as it's set out is to provide guidelines around all grants, all sponsorships within the county. I don't feel that and and many around the table were struggling with their own needs for RIPA in in departmental, interdepartmental. So it was sort of an opportunity for us to sit down and develop a policy, a process where we can have a central point of intake that we can stream everyone through the same intake and we can determine, is this a large request? Because at the end of the day, when you open up a grants policy, you're going to be opening up the large requests to many other areas. It's not just going to be one group. As soon as there's knowledge that there's money to be had, you're going to have more than one applicant. So that means you're going to need a process in order to vet those applications. If you don't have that process in place for all that's fair, transparent and the same, it becomes, where's the easier way to get money? What, when do I want to try? So it's just a way to streamline the whole thing to make it one point of intake, to make it easier for staff with a start and an end date. Put the onus back on the applicants in order to, you know, report back, provide the information we're looking for in order to make those decisions. And then who's going to make the decision? Is it going to be RIPA or is it going to be council? So that was sort of the general you know, thought process when we were going through this. So yes, it does become, you know, administratively burdensome and not to say that it wouldn't. But it becomes also fair, transparent and equitable across the board for everyone.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Sloan.
Thank you. Some good news. After trying three chargers, it was the 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 wall socket that wasn't working. So I'm back up here and can leave my I apologize, but sometimes virtual isn't as easy as it sounds. On that note, I I guess what I'm wondering again is if with regardless of the option, and a question to the warden and those that have been before, has there ever been a sponsorship committee? In the sense of that some of the larger grants could be looked at, not just with the senior staff, but with the council involvement? Is that something that would, again, might be considered by the group? Thank you, Warden.
Well, thank you for that. I would look to Counselor Jones and perhaps Catherine or even Jen around the table who have been here perhaps longer than most of us, that I'm not aware of any sponsorship type committee. Counselor Jones or definitely Deputy Warden Jones.
Through you to Counselor Sloan. Up until the last term of council, it was always a committee of council that decided all this.
Right.
There was no committee. There's no RIPA either for deciding on grants. It was council that did that.
Yeah, that was, you're right. That was something from two thousand nineteen moving forward. Yeah. Yeah. The first year of actually going through those grants was kind of painful. And it's only gotten worse. Yeah. Further discussion? Deputy Warden.
I guess we get to the crux of the problem. So with regards to the hospital and the previous commitment was over ten years. When the decision was made, staff knew for ten years we'd be contributing X number of dollars. And I thought, you know what? That's that's pretty simple. Now we're looking at it per year basis. I don't think that's simple. I think that's more complex. I can live with a term of council, so realistically, that's a compromise, but yearly, I don't see how that works. I really don't.
Counselor Noble.
Through you, Warden. If if we're looking at big projects, though, there's term of council is actually quite short. I'm realizing this very quickly. So if you're looking at funding a big project and it's something like that, you you can't just limit it to a very short timeframe. Unless you have really deep pockets to finance it over a short timeframe.
It's good observation. So we're at the point, or are we at the point of recognizing the three potential options that have been put before us? Fourth, if you want to include Counselor Sloan's idea, is council on the point or in a position that they want to make that decision today? Counselor Zegar.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Short answer, I would say no, because I I would like just a clearer presentation on on options. I think there's been a really good discussion. I I think there are ways to simplify this. Because when we're using words like large, I think we're really talking about capital requests.
Yep.
And then everything else is event based. And so, for example, could we just look at two streams? One that goes all under grant applications that are for events. So sponsorships and everything would be funneled through the same criteria. What's your event? What's your budget? What's your financial position? What's your contribution to the community, whether you are fair or a conference organizers? Like, to me, there's just one big category. So maybe it requires a bit of tweaking. And that stays in RIPA, so it's almost status quo. And perhaps what is being proposed is a new stream for capital requests. Some may be small, like I don't know if we want to get into small and large. But then that would explore what has been discussed today as far as is a term of council? Could it be multi-year? Perhaps the formula is, I like the fact that formulas are being considered. So something that would consider a formula that keeps the offer within the context and the proportion of our population size or of our levy and of our operational budget. So I I think there's work, there's there's room to take a lot of the elements of the discussion today and maybe come back with a revised proposal. So that so that's why my short answer to your questions, I don't think this is ready for today.
Well, that was something I believe that Jen, you'd already predicated in your earlier comments that may not be ready to make that decision. Any additional comments? Counselor Hens.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm not prepared to make that decision today either. And part of the reason is my thought process has evolved through all of this. You know, I'm looking at it through a different lens as you sit on council longer. Financial responsibility being one of them parameters. Jennifer, thank you for the report. It was requested of you, very thorough. There's so many things in here I like. I like the guardrails that keeps council on the path that we're supposed to be. I like the example of the London budget where we have a predetermined amount. I think that's a reasonable thing to do. And then when your budget is set, it's fully transparent. That's the amount that's included in this fiscal year. And that's the end of it. Also, and I've encountered this where you've inherited something. One term of council made a decision that today wasn't the right one. So I like that too, where this term of council makes a decision that this term of council is responsible for. So thank you for the report. It just made me think more. And that's the reason I just I'm not at a decision making process today.
All right. Consensus? Catherine. Like if there's any further discussion today, you want to prolong it, do you? Counselor Whitner?
I wanted to bring up. I haven't said anything about the RIPA committee and I'm on it and I don't, probably Deputy Warden Jones and probably the Warden. It's a pretty owner's task. Like you can put twenty or thirty hours into this and we had to do it twice this year. And it's all subjective to your opinion. I don't know how good is that, you know, helping out these organizations. Pretty convoluted and the financial statement certainly helped. We found a lot this year that probably didn't need what they were asking for and that really helped pare it down. And I think we should be I don't know, there's a way to make this a lot simpler program or process, but I don't think it's working very well, in my opinion. So I just want to throw that out there and that may help this in the end too. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Noble.
Through you, Warden. If it's this confusing for us, I can only imagine how confusing it is for the public and they're the ones that are asking us to support them in different levels. So when we come back and we talk about this, I think it needs to be simplified in a way that it's easy for everybody to understand.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, seeing nothing further, Catherine, let's hear what you've got.
Resolved that the report titled Grant and Sponsorship Policy from the Director of Financial Services Treasurer dated September fifth, two thousand twenty four be received and filed and that staff incorporate feedback received from county council into a revised grant and sponsorship policy for presentation at a future meeting.
Okay. We have a mover and second for that. Counselor Hens will move. And Counselor Latham will second. All in favor of that? That is carried and thank you for that. It's again, Jen, good report. Thank you for bringing it forward. It is thought provoking. And it's not that easy to deal with. It's a bigger one. No. Okay, I know we've been an hour and a half. We've got a few items to get through and I know that you have a tight timeline, Deputy Warden. All right, then can we take a five minute break? And then we'll get back to it and get through this agenda. And thank you for that, Deputy Warden.
Thank you.
Then why don't we break for lunch then? And Andrew will give you an opportunity to have a sandwich or something. Then what do you think? Thirty minutes enough?
I'm happy.
We'll, we'll, no, fifteen is a little short. We will reconvene. Okay, thank you. Ressessing. Okay, welcome back. We left off at section seven, council correspondence and seven one items for consideration. We have a number of items. We'll go through them one at a time. Seven one one, the flag raising proclamation request from the St. Thomas Elgin Local Immigration Partnership for welcoming week two thousand twenty four. Do you want to have any questions or concerns with this one? Catherine, you have a motion for us?
Resolved that Elgin County Council approve a flag raising and proclamation request from the St. Thomas Elgin Local Immigration Partnership to acknowledge welcoming week, an annual countywide event that celebrates the important work being done to make Elgin a welcoming and inclusive community and that the flag raising and proclamation take place at the Elgin County Heritage Center on September twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four.
Mover and second please. Deputy Warden Jones, Counselor Zegar, all in favor? Favor. Yeah. That's carried. Thank you. Seven one two, resolution from the municipality of Quinty West regarding the Canada Community Building Fund. Okay, here we go. Are there any questions on this? What's council's wish? Do you want to support this motion? Deputy Warden Jones.
This is what used to be called gas tax.
Yes.
Basically, they're saying they're falling behind the times with inflation, so I'd support.
Okay. That sounds like a mover to me. Do we have a second for that motion then? Counselor Whitner. All in favor then? That's carried. Seven one three, resolution from the town of Bradford West Willenbury regarding the long service medals for paramedics and police officers. I understand the intent is to show the same kind of recognition that's already available to firefighters. I have a question though for someone. Do you know if full time fire crews get the same recognition as volunteers? Yeah.
You mean as in years of service pins?
Yeah.
I think they do.
Okay.
That's, that's, yeah. That's a material pin.
Okay. All right, any concerns with this one, wanting to support it? Okay, moved by Counselor Latham. Do we have a second for that? Counselor Hens. Catherine.
Resolved that Elgin County Council support the resolution from the town of Bradford West Willenbury, council that endorses the creation of a provincewide long service medal for police and for paramedics modeled after the existing award for firefighters.
All in favor of that? And that's carried. Thank you. Seven one four, resolution from the township of Sterling Rodden regarding the public sector salary disclosure. This one makes a lot of sense, actually. You know, oftentimes they get after people on the sunshine list and this is since ninety six. I wonder what that sunshine list would look like if you indexed it. It should be a lot shorter. Absolutely. Oh, what's council think? You want to support that one? Nope. You don't want to support the sunshine list? No comment. Looking for council direction on this. Yes, Deputy Warden Jones.
I know I had South Hill dealt with this last night and our staff were indifferent.
Indifferent?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So we didn't do anything about it.
Fair enough. Okay, if there's no particular support, then I would recommend just receive for information. Okay, I'm seeing nods there. So we have a mover and seconder to receive for information? Counselor Giger and Counselor Cookett. All in favor? And it's carried. Thank you. Moves on to the consent agenda. Items for considerate or for information includes the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus Advocates for, or advocates for rural needs at the Association of Municipality of Ontario, the 2024 Conference. The Rural Municipal Leader Support Solve the Crisis Campaign to address homelessness and mental health. And finally, a report from the Elgin Ontario Health Team. Any questions from anyone? If not, let's have a mover and seconder to receive for information. Counselor Noble and Counselor Hens. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Moving on then with Section 8, Other Business Statements, Inquiries by Members. Anyone want to have a statement or an inquiry? Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a couple of dates to keep in mind. This Thursday at 2:30 is the official opening of our first conservation area in Southold under KCCA, which is an exciting event and long anticipated since the weather put it off for several months. But if you're available, the end of Glen Gareth Drive in Tallville, which is the Ridge subdivision. So some exciting news coming down the line. And also on the 25th of this month is Business After Five. It's in Southold at Nature's Oasis, one of our premier wedding destinations in Elgin County. And they're hosting the event if anybody's interested. Second line, I'm sure Carolyn has the address or Southold can provide the address. It's on second line, though.
Please share that out, yeah. I think if anybody's available and can make it, it'd be great, you know? We often don't get out there to these things.
No, it's, it's one of these hidden gems that no one sees unless they actually drive down Second Line, which very few people do.
Okay, thank you. Any other statements or inquiries by members? Counselor Latham.
Yeah, through the chair. Just a reminder that Rodney Fair is this weekend, starting 7 o'clock on Friday evening, and then running Saturday and Sunday.
Look forward to being there. I look forward to attending.
Yeah, I'll see you there.
Okay. Any other statements or inquiries? I don't have the final, I'd just like to say that I, you know, although we don't have the final numbers yet for the Warden's Charity Golf Tournament, I do want to thank all those who participated, and particularly the staff involvement and all this. I would note that there were some announcements to come out, and I guess I would be remiss if I didn't mention perhaps our most, one of our most honest team members out there. Congratulations, Counselor Whitner. It's a distinction. Well, I do. I know how it was judged. But, you know, your, your winning streak must be going pretty good there because on Saturday, I understand he pulled off a coup and got the dignitary plowing match. That was maybe perhaps prejudged too, don't you think, Counselor Hens?
Yeah, Mr. Warden, he won the, I don't know what you call it, king of the furrow, but he got the award for plowing the straightest. So he is a straight shooter. I can attest to that.
Straight shooter, absolutely. The other phrasing was-
The perm was on his neighbor. So I'm still skeptical that the fix was in, but I can't prove it.
Well, there you go. There you go. One would also say if you plow a straight furrow, you're always in a rut. So congratulations, Counselor Whitner. Yes, you have something to add?
Counselor Hens also plowed. I mean, did a pretty good job. Yeah. No, it was a good day. I mean, we had some funny weather. We had actually a good turnout for the event. So I was happy to see everybody that could come out. And we even had a little bit on Sunday for some of the antique stuff. So we got to keep that kind of stuff alive because it's the dying art. So anyway, thanks for coming.
Perfect. Moving on, are there any notices of motion? Don't see any. How about matters of urgency? Seeing none, that means we're moving into closed meeting items.
Resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act Section 239-2. Closed meeting item number one, closed meeting minutes August 13th, 2024. And closed meeting item number two, Norman Lindale Settlement Boundary Expansion under Section K, a position planned procedure criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that, please? Counselor Whitner will move. Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? Okay, that is carried. Welcome back. Motion to rise and report.
Resolved that we do now rise and report.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble will move. Counselor Hens will second. Got volunteered there, Mike. All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number one.
Resolved that the August 13th, 2024, closed meeting minutes be adopted.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble and Counselor Latham. All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number two.
Resolved that the report titled Norman Lindale Settlement Boundary Expansion from the Director of Planning and Development dated September 10th, 2024 be received and filed, and that council supports the boundary adjustment of the Norman Lindale Tier One Settlement Area to include the remainder of the St. Thomas Psychiatric Hospital lands, and that staff proceed as directed in conversations with the province.
Mover and seconder? Deputy Warden Jones and Counselor Latham. All in favor? That's carried. Motion to adopt recommendations from the Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the Committee of the Whole.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble, Counselor Hens. All in favor? Carried. Consideration of the bylaws.
Bylaw number 2432, being a bylaw to appoint a Secretary Treasurer of the Elgin County Land Division Committee. Resolved that bylaw number 2432 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
We have a mover and seconder for that. Deputy Warden Jones? Counselor Latham? All in favor? That's carried. Next.
Bylaw number 2433, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the September 10th, 2024 meeting. Resolved that bylaw number 2433 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Mover and seconder? Counselor Noble, Counselor Hens. All in favor? That's carried, which brings us to the adjournment.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at 11, or 1:11 PM to meet again on September 24th, 2024 at 9 o'clock AM.
We have a mover and, Mike. Counselor Whitner and Counselor Cookett will second. All in favor? And we, that is carried. We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us today. Lots of good discussions. We look forward to joining you shortly.